Good afternoon and welcome to the Chatham Select Board February 23rd, 2021 meeting. This is remote participation only. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify me. Pursuant to Governor Baker's 12 March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 23rd, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is is being conducted via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 134208476, pound, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. For efficiencies, while we are using this remote format, please mute your audio until called on, which you can do so if using the Team app by using the Raise Your Hand feature in that app, or if you are on a phone, please speak out to me when asked. Equally important, please disable your videos until appropriate time to present or comment. I want to remind everybody that this is a business meeting, so I'm pretty sure you don't want us to see your ceiling, or your unattended room, or your dining, or your lounging in a chair, or on your bed, or even making dinner. It is somewhat distracting. So with all that, we'll do a roll call to establish a quorum of the select board, and I'll start that now. So, Select Board Member Kokolos.
Present.
Board Member Metters.
Present.
Board Member Nacastro.
Present.
Board Member Dinkins.
Present.
Okay, and the chair is present, so we do have a quorum. Everybody is present. All right, first order of business is to accept the meeting minutes of February 16, 2021. Do I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes?
So move, Peter.
Peter, thank you, second.
Second.
Jeff, second, okay. Are there any edits or comments on the meeting minutes? We'll go first with Dean and then Jeff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Four small edits, first on page four, second to last paragraph, which begins, "It was noted that earlier in the day, Mr. Myers had forwarded..." I'd like to insert this phrase after the word "had" and before the word "forwarded", "via a select board member." Via a select board member. Then on page nine, first paragraph, line down, which begins, "The property for municipal use..." I'd like to insert the word "possible" before the word "municipal," so the property for possible municipal use, or inspect the word "possible" where it appears the second time there, and insert the word "future." So it would read, "The property for possible municipal use or future sale."
Okay.
And then two others on page 13, under Section E, second paragraph, which begins, Florence Sullivan, Chatham, second line, where it says, "Boards, apostrophe, yes." I don't think there should be an apostrophe there.
Okay.
And finally, on page 14, in the motion, under Section 4, motion by Nacastro, strike the word "to."
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Peter, and then Jeff, sorry. Peter, go ahead.
Okay. I'd only add on page 13, the third paragraph up, third line from the bottom of that paragraph that starts with "not have wanted the property to sit vacant for," and it would be, strike, "MA so many years."
Okay, thank you. Jeffrey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Page four, the one, two, third paragraph, middle of the paragraph, the phrase, "He said these powers include..." He said these powers include is just double-stated on page four, so that's a repeat. The bottom of page six, last paragraph, sentence starting, "Director Halelas established listing..." Should be additional quotes, and AL on additional quotes on equipment costs, instead of addition quotes.
Okay.
On the top of page nine, I'd like to insert a word in the first paragraph. The location of the property in relation to churches, the elementary school in downtown was noted as advantages in placing housing in an established neighborhood in a... So I'd like to add the words, "as advantages in placing housing in an established neighborhood in a village center."
Okay.
Then, I had the same one that that looking Kokolos had, so thank you, that's it.
Okay. All right, any other additions? Hearing none. We'll take a vote on the amended meeting minutes. Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the chair says aye, so the meeting minutes are approved. Okay. So our next order of business is public announcements and agenda item requests. Does the board have any? Dean and Jeff's hands are still up.
That's a mistake.
Okay. Okay, nothing from the board. Any from the remote participants? Okay, we're seeing none tonight, thank you. So I just want to review the packet before we get started, so everybody has an idea of where we are. Our new business will include an update on the coronavirus from both Director of Natural Resources and our town manager, and then we'll have public comments on our business agenda items, which will be the fiscal 2022 operating and capital budget review, inclusive of the finance committee's report and the board's transmittal of the approval of the budget. Then we will have housing-related, then you can, comments on housing-related special legislation, our annual town meeting articles review, which will be stormwater article and the general bylaw amendment, our annual town meeting election to consider dates extension, and then our final item, which is the select board meeting public participation policy, six-month review. We're going to allow public comment will be accepted during that discussion. So, and then finally, we'll have final comments at the end of the evening. So we've reviewed that, so let's go to the coronavirus update by Director of Natural Resources, Dr. Duncanson. Dr. Bob?
Thanks, Shereen. Good evening, everybody. So for once, I think I have some pretty good news. So far in Chatham, we are currently at 253 cases, and that is only up two cases since your meeting last week. So in the last seven days, we've only had two new cases of COVID-19 reported to us. That represents a 90% drop from where we were in previous weeks, when we were averaging 20, 25, and even higher new cases in a week. So that is great news. And if you bear with me, let me share my screen here. Hopefully, everybody can see the graphic. This is the graphic that I generally show every week that shows where we are and where we've been since the pandemic began, really in March of 2020. You can see the peak we had in December and in the large peak in January. So far this month, now we're at the 23rd, we are currently at 35 cases in February, which is a little more than a third of what we experienced back in January. So clearly, unless something drastic happens in the next, you know, five or six days, we are over the major peak resulting from the holidays and, you know, Christmas period when everybody's traveling and New Year's parties and things like that. So far, we haven't seen any evidence of a peak from Super Bowl parties, so, you know, hopefully that remains to be true. And it is too early to tell if we're going to see any kind of an increase in cases resulting from last week's school vacation week. You know, I know that quite a few people traveled to various locales because they'd just finally gotten fed up with, you know, hanging around home for a year, but hopefully with all the protocols in place, we don't see any impact of that, but really, we won't see that for roughly another two weeks. But hopefully, our downward trend continues. Things are still very good at Liberty Commons. They have not reported any new cases recently, so it looks as well that they are over their peak that they had in mid-January, mid-December to mid-January as well. So that's good news for tonight. Just quickly, our age distribution graphic, hasn't been a whole lot of change in that with our recent cases. We had one case in a 43-year-old and one case in a 75-year-old. So, you know, again, it's kind of split in that that age bracket. You can see clearly the majority of our cases in Chatham were in the older demographic and then the younger demographics, the, you know, the really the 29-year-olds and younger were the next highest groups we had. So, and that's, that's been pretty consistent. You know, as I said last week, most of our cases recently have been in younger demographics, you know, those say under 59-year-olds. And then the only other thing that I wanted to report tonight was just that we did get notified over the weekend of another positive case in a local business. Max Seafood Restaurant in Chatham Fish and Lobster reported a case. They closed down, they posted the required public notice, and Chatham Fish and Lobster was to reopen today. The timeline for Max Seafood reopening was somewhat unknown because of contract tracing and just, you know, the shortage of help this time of the year was impacting their ability to reopen the restaurant portion, but hopefully, we'll hear about that here shortly. No other real definitive news today from our various calls with the county and the state. You know, obviously, vaccine continues to be the critical thing. We did, and I'm sure Shereen can speak, or maybe Jill will speak further. There was a call yesterday with Senator Seer and the rest of our Cape Legislative Delegation, basically all the towns in the Cape, and then a letter subsequently sent up to the Mary Lou Sudders, the Commissioner for Public Health, outlining a plan for a Cape mass vaccination site, not run, not one of the runs by the state, but run here, homegrown in Barnstable County with the cooperation of Barnstable County, Forests, and Cape Cod Healthcare. And hopefully, there'll be more information coming on that shortly, once that is announced officially and we know exactly when it's going to open, what the hours and what the days and all of that will be. So that as well is good news. That would be in addition to the counties, what the county's been running for the last month or so of sub-regional clinics, you know, smaller clinics in Falmouth, Hyannis, Orleans, Eastham, and that part of the Cape. That will continue as well, predicated upon the Cape getting additional vaccine. There's also an effort underway, and we've been working with Outer Cape Health Services. Judy Giorgio, the health agent, I had a call last week with Outer Cape Health Services, as well as the Chatham Housing Authority and folks from Wise Living. There's, and also participating in that has been the Council on Aging, Mandy and her team, but there's really two efforts underway. One is to bring vaccine directly to homebound residents, so those residents that, for whatever reason, can't get out of the house and can't get to a clinic, even one, you know, potentially as close as Orleans. There are efforts underway to set up a process to bring the vaccine directly to them. And there is also another effort underway to provide assistance to folks that have had trouble navigating the state's website for vaccine appointments, which we all know has not been the easiest thing in the world and was made more difficult last week with the opening of the eligibility to those 65 and older, because that added about another million people into that mix. There's an effort underway to gather the appropriate information and then pass that along to Cape Cod Healthcare, and they will reach out to those individuals directly to make appointments for them. So more information on that will be forthcoming as well over the next week or so. So that's what I have for you tonight, so happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Bob. Any questions for Bob? Correct?
I see it being recorded, so.
So we can continue, okay. All right, Elaine, why don't you go ahead then?
Okay, thank you. There have not been any appointments available since the VaxFinder site went down, which I think was last Friday, coming from the state. I know you can go to CVS and hopefully find some things there. Have we been given any indication when the next shipment is coming into the state? Because nobody's getting vaccinated except what was scheduled a couple of weeks ago.
The state did receive vaccine earlier. The state is currently uploading large numbers of appointments on Thursdays. That's why you're not seeing anything pop up for like the state's mass vaccination sites, which were already full, because they are generally uploading new appointments on Thursdays, generally at around 8:00 in the morning, so that people don't have to stay up, you know, all night or get online at 12:01 a.m. And that's what happened. That's, that's what basically resulted in the crash last week, when the website went down for about two to two and a half hours. But yes, there are appointments available at other locations potentially, and hopefully on Thursday, we will see a large number of appointments reopen for the state's mass vaccination sites.
And do we expect to get any here on Cape Cod?
I don't think we will necessarily see anything specifically open up this week on Cape. The county is, for the next couple of weeks, giving second doses to first responders and all that received their first doses back in January. But as I said, we may be hearing some news about a site opening up later this week. It's all predicated upon the vaccine. Vaccine orders go in on Tuesdays at 5:00, and generally, the state makes the allocations on Fridays. So by the end of this week, we may have some definitive information on something opening up on the Cape next week, but if not, probably the week after that.
Thank you.
I also want to add, Dr. Bob, that the Biden's administration just upped the amount of vaccines going to each state by almost a double, so that's a good indication that we're going to see more. Any other questions for Dr. Bob? If not, Jill, do you want to speak a little more to the meeting that you had on Monday? Or do you have anything you want to add?
The only thing I wanted to add is that each town is getting our data together to make sure that we're giving it to the county and through the letter to our Cape Legislative Delegation to the Governor and Lieutenant Governor's Office, so that we have accurate numbers of who we think are homebound, or the new way of describing, those residents are housers, so knowing exactly who needs that kind of service. And the good news is that even before COVID, we've been tracking these certain residents. So we'll have that, every town will have that, and we're just going to wait, hopefully, as Bob said, we'll know in a couple of days, and hopefully, we get a regional site. I know regional plans are now being submitted, so that's in place, and, you know, we're hoping for 750 or 800 shots a day if we can get this regional site, which would not be a mass vaccination site, but would be a large vaccination site that we would be working with Cape Cod Healthcare in the county through our regional partners, as well as Outer Cape. So just more to come.
Thank you, Jill. I can add a little bit more that there's probably going to be an announcement on Thursday, I think, on some of this, according to my meeting today with the COVID Task Force. We also, I think that the efforts that, the letter that went up, up the chain, I think that made a difference. We had a big press avail last Thursday. I think it got the governor's ear. I think the phone calls everybody was making to the governor, it's made a difference, and I think we'll see a shift in the next couple of weeks. I'm really happy to see Chatham's numbers down. It's indicated that that's down across the county, so that's really good news for our region. So, but I want to remind everybody to please stay vigilant, because it's, you know, this is still, this is still a problem for us. Dean, you had your hand up if you'd like to ask a question?
Thank you. I had a question that follows from something that Bob was saying, but I wanted to just make the comment, because I know that it's been in the media a little bit, but the letter that you referred to, just for the benefit of the watching and listening, was a letter that was sent to the governor, basically demanding some action on the Cape for vaccinations. And it was signed by the entire legislative delegation and many, many select board members across, including all five members of the Chatham Select Board. A question I had, Bob, it just intrigued me to ask, the pipeline for the vaccines that are coming, I understand the state gets them from the feds and, or from the manufacturers assigned by the feds, I would assume. How do the pharmacies get them? Are they getting them, does the state give the supply up among the different Walgreens and CVS and Stop &amp; Shop, or are they getting them directly from the manufacturers through their own pipelines?
In most cases, they are getting them from the feds through a federal pharmacy partnership. It's similar to what's happening. There's also the community health centers, which for us is, or for Chatham, is Outer Cape Health Services. There's another community health center in Mashpee serving that part of the Cape. They are also getting separate allocations above and beyond or outside of what the state gets and then allocates, in this case, to the region or to the mass vaccination sites. So it depends, there's different channels for vaccine. I'm not aware of any of the pharmacies that are getting directly from the manufacturers. It's all going through the federal government one way or the other, similar to what happened when the long-term care facilities were taken care of under a federal pharmacy relationship to get them the vaccine early.
But the state is not a middle person in that, in what pharmacies got?
No, not in what the pharmacies get, no.
Okay, and a last additional question. I don't know if the data's changed, but I thought I heard a week or so ago that the 26th, which is this Friday, the FDA is supposed to meet to approve the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. Is that still the case?
Yes, they have started their review, and we are anticipating an announcement on Friday, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Dean. Any other questions? Elaine, your hand's still up. Did you have another question, or is that just from previous?
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Jill.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay. So now we're going to move into public comment, period, and that's where we can, where you can, the public, have five minutes per person to speak to any of the items in the business agenda, which include our operating budget review. to any of the items in the business agenda, which include our operating budget review, the finance committee report, our approval of the operating capital budget, housing, our housing-related special legislation. That's going to be to establish a real property transfer fee in the town, pending 2021 Annual Town Meeting articles for review, Stormwater article ballot question, and the General Bylaw Amendment. And then our town meeting annual election consideration for a date extension. So any public comments? Channel 18, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Shereen. We're just letting you know that everything's good on our end. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure, Davis.
Okay, I have you, thank you. I think that's Gloria, correct? I recognize your voice.
Yes, it's Gloria Freeman on the telephone.
Okay, so Gloria, why don't you go ahead first, and then we'll call on the remote participants in the Teams app. So why don't you go ahead first?
Okay, thank you very much. I'm correct that I'm not allowed to ask questions during the discussion of the transfer tax?
I think it's best that you ask those questions right now.
Okay. So I have a list of questions and comments on the transfer tax agenda item, which I hope can be answered when you do discuss it. Does this article take a simple majority vote or a two-thirds majority vote at town meeting? I ask that because in Section 8, the article states that for town meeting to eliminate the tax in the future, it will take a two-thirds majority. And I believe that initiating it and ending it, if that is town meetings, determination in the future should be consistent. Next, I believe a $2 million property at today's sales prices in Chatham is a low threshold. A small, single-story house in my neighborhood recently sold for just over $2 million. Next, if a house sells for $2,500,000, does the seller pay on the full amount? Or is payment limited to the $500,000 over the $2 million? Next, was there any discussion about whether the buyer or seller should pay this tax? In Nantucket, it's the seller, but in Provincetown, it's the buyer. $10,000 on a $2 million house can be difficult for property owners whose equity in their home is their retirement income should they decide to downsize. Also, was there any discussion about levying this tax only on second residences? Not primary residences. Just two more. Is the tax based on the total sale price? Or are fees, mortgages, or other debts associated with the asset subtracted? And was there any discussion about town meeting voting each year? Whether the income from this tax goes to the schools, affordable housing, OPGD liability, or an emergency fund, whatever's the current need? So I thank you, and I look forward to learning more about the tax.
Thank you, Gloria. Stephen Buckley is next. Stephen? Stephen, you might be muted.
Yep, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Go ahead.
Okay. I wanted to point out a document in anticipation or prior to the discussion later on about public participation. I don't think I'll take five minutes to explain it, but back in 2014, that Annual Town Meeting, there was an article that I presented for a resolution to have a policy on public participation, and it was adopted by a substantial majority, according to the moderator at that time. And the only way to find it on the town's website is if you knew it existed. And so you would have to do a search up to the top in the search box on the town's main webpage there for "public participation." And there's a number of things referring to tonight's agenda item. But if you scroll down about four, you'll see 2014 ATM. And that is where the language on that article is located. So if people wanted to pull it up ahead of time or have it handy prior to the discussion later on, which I understand will be allowed to comment, then they'll know what I'm talking about ahead of time instead of scrambling to pull it up now. But basically, and I won't read the whole thing, but it says, "Resolve that the town of Chatham recognizes the fundamental role of informed and engaged citizens in their town's governance, and so therefore adopts a policy for practices that are consistent with the following core values for the practice of public participation." And I won't read them off, but it's not a policy of practices, but it's a policy for practices that if the practices that are adopted by the town be consistent with this policy, that the town of Chatham, which is what happens at town meeting, is the town of Chatham adopted this policy. The town of Chatham does have a policy and has one for approximately seven years that virtually nobody knows about because it's hard to find on the website. So that's it. People can pull that up and look at it and if they wanted to speak later on. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen. Carolyn McClellan, I believe.
Hello. Hi. Yeah, this is Carolyn McClellan, Chair of the Community Housing Partnership. And I just wanted to chime in this evening and acknowledge the work that you've all done on affordable housing. And thank you for considering the transfer tax. And I also want to acknowledge the hard work that the FinCom has done in their report that they submitted to you in your agenda packet, and they're acknowledging that housing is a number-one priority in Chatham. And I'm thankful for them to recognize the realities that local citizens are facing now. And just in reference to one of the comments an earlier participant made about the $2 million threshold being too low because a small property sold near her for $2 million, that would be my argument for it being necessary in that if some small little house is going for $2 million, that's relative to how unaffordable homes are for the average person. So I think that makes it even more necessary. But I do want to thank you for the work you've done, and I think the necessity of having, establishing a revenue stream for affordable and attainable housing is absolutely necessary if you want to be serious and do more than talk about we need housing, we need to be able to fund it. And so I just want to express that and thank you for the work that you're doing. And I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Our next commenter is Rick Levitt. Welcome, Rick.
Thank you, Shereen. I'll be very brief. This is a bold action, establishing a real property transfer fee in the town of Chatham. This is a bold action showing the town's commitment, strong commitment to affordable, attainable housing, and I totally support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next commenter is Elaine Gibbs. Elaine?
Yes, thank you. I would like to comment on the transfer tax as well. I'm not sure that this is necessarily the best time to oppose another tax on Chatham residents because I think many of the people who are selling homes are forced to do them right now, and their intent is to downsize in Chatham. And nor do I think that $2 million in Chatham is necessarily a mansion, as it has been characterized, because in many cases, it is the land that has appreciated over the years, not the structure. But if you do go forward with it and want to assure that it passes at town meeting, I would strongly urge you to have the tax paid by the buyer rather than the seller for a number of reasons. In many cases, these properties sold are owned by primary residents who have paid taxes to Chatham for many, many years, if not generations. And the equity they have built up over those years is the only asset they have for retirement. The cost to sell a home in any town, but particularly in Massachusetts, is very high, and they're all paid by the seller. They're required to pay 20% of federal capital gains, which will be significant for long-term homeowners because their cost basis would be so low. 5.2% state capital gains, 5% on a real estate fee on the total sale price, which would be $100,000 alone, and a state transfer tax. And unlike most counties, Barstool also has a state transfer tax. So the costs end up for a property owner who has lived in their home their whole lives is about 30%, goes to taxes. If there's a mortgage, they also have to pay that off, and then they have to find some place to live. None of these costs apply to the buyers, who most likely are purchasing a second residence. And I think that would be viewed as a small price to be paid by a buyer who is probably purchasing a second home to live in Chatham. And I think it would make it more palatable for the voters at town meeting. I think that the people selling their homes have paid their dues to Chatham, the people coming in want to live here, I think it would make sense for them to be the ones to pay the tax. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other commenters before we move into our business discussion? Okay, I'm not hearing any. So I'm going to move into our business agenda, and we're going to start off with our fiscal year 2022 operating and capital budget review. Our first up is the director, our Finance Committee Director, Stephen Daniel, is going to make a presentation of their perspective on the proposed budget. And what I'm going to ask the board is if you have any questions along the way, feel free to exchange back and forth with Stephen on this, and that way we'll move forward with the discussion effectively. All right. Go ahead, Stephen. Welcome. Are you there?
I am here.
All right, welcome.
Thank you for having me. Welcome, everybody. Hi, everybody. I guess I would like to thank, as we always do begin, excuse me, by thanking Town Manager Jill Goldsmith, Finance Director Alex Halala, and all of the staff who are involved in putting this process together every year. In the best of years, we think it's an enormous undertaking. We suspected in this year, with socially distanced and remote working, it was probably even more challenging. So we're certainly grateful for the efforts of everybody involved in this undertaking. I think it is, it's probably fair to say, if we're right, and this is tougher on the staff here, it's probably in some respects easier on the Finance Committee, given the nature of this budget, given kind of the thoughtful responsiveness to current conditions that we find embedded in this budget. Clearly uncertain times, I think both the Town Manager, Finance Director, and the Board of Selectmen should be applauded for the pivot they made last spring in redirecting the budget into a more conservative platform. And I think the same is certainly the case this year. Most of the increases that we see in this budget, which amount in the operating budget, at least I think to about 1.5%, are reflective of step increases for salaries, service contract, price increases that were essentially embedded in the service contracts. So there's virtually no, you know, not structural spending embedded in this budget. We've noted on a number of occasions that a budget really is a statement of municipal priorities and of resource allocations. We think in this uncertain time, this thoughtfully reflective budget does that. We applaud the conservative estimates that have been, that are sort of underlying the budget, although we will note some degree of optimism that the clouds may be on the cusp of lifting to one degree or another. Goldman Sachs and Bank of America, last week, each unveiled updated GDP estimates for each of the four quarters for this year, in some instances stretching up to 8% and 9% economic growth. The New York Fed and the Atlanta Fed similarly are bolstering their estimates of economic growth. So while we applaud this conservative budget and appreciate its directionality, we're cautiously optimistic that we may be able to outperform, at least on the revenue side. I think all in, given the fact that this is all just structural spending increases, we're wholly supportive of the operating budget as presented for FY21. Sorry, I've got barking dogs downstairs. Usually means somebody's trying to get in. So I think, you know, in some respects, this has been an episode this year where I think we feel as a committee, we've had a little less time to think about this. I don't necessarily believe our conclusions would be any different with respect to the operating budget, but the timeframe seems a little more compressed. I think Zoom or Teams is a platform that is, you know, is less accommodating to, you know, in-depth conversation and discussion around elements such as budgeting. But we fully endorse and support the proposed operating budget as presented. In respect of kind of topics of note, which is where we typically go in these things, I was struck with the other day by several figures. There were about 600 pending or closed home sales in Chatham in 2020, up from about 350 the year before. 2019, the median home sale price was $825,000. 2020, that increased to about $863,000. And interestingly, for the month of January, that number went up by 45% to $1.3 million on 26 closed transactions, 17 pending sales. 26 closed sales in the month of January with a median price of $1.3 million. You know, I suppose on the one hand, as we say in our note, that's something we can celebrate, that we're an attractive place of refuge during a time of uncertainty and are, you know, well-managed town, our natural beauty are all attractive to people seeking some kind of refuge from the uncertainty. But at the same time, I think it strikes really at the core of something that Finance Committee's been speaking about for the last year, and certainly that the Select Board has taken a stance on, which is this whole issue of affordable and attainable housing in the town of Chatham. I would reference the work product of the Finance Committee's Community Housing Working Group, which was delivered about this time last year. We think at this point, there's no higher municipal priority for the town of Chatham than the creation of a significant number of attainable and affordable housing units here in town. Again, the commitment of the Select Board in this regard over the last months and quarters is very encouraging to us, as is frankly, the proposed $1 million CPA funding package and the transfer tax prospect that we heard of a few minutes ago. So we think it's going to be hard, right? There's going to clearly be people who are opposed to this, there's going to be areas that are opposed to it, there's going to be people who think it should be done one way or another. But we really encourage kind of persistence and perseverance in pursuing this goal, because our concern, as we noted in the Working Group Report of a year ago, is that absent this significant and focused effort, we have a very different future than I think we all would like to see and hold for this town. I think it would be misleading to say we weren't disappointed, honestly, about the decision last week not to pursue a housing solution at the Marion Ellis House. One house in a rental program or in the Marconi program going to tip the balance? No, clearly it's not going to. But we thought it was a terrific opportunity for the Select Board to really take a stand and serve as something emblematic of an effort to begin to really try to correct this problem. So our hope is that perhaps that'll get reconsidered. It's been sitting vacant for 10 years, a dozen years. It's slowly, you know, it's really kind of demolition by neglect at this point in time. But it seems like the kind of thing that if we collaborated with the tech student, or at least put some tens of thousands of dollars into it, we could get a family in there and make a statement about our intentions. So that's, I think, again, for us, priority number one is to focus on this housing issue. We also pick up the reference that we made in our initial response, again, from about a year ago, to the proposed FY21 budget regarding this inference of stress within the town workforce. the town workforce that we read in the budget, whether it was the request for five FTEs from the Town Manager, whether, I think it was the underlying request from staff for up to 11 FTEs to manage, and if the workflow that were there being presented was with. That's concerning to us. Obviously, we want to have a, we've got a terrific municipal workforce, we want to keep them engaged and in a healthy kind of state of work-life balance. It's not clear to us where that topic goes a year from now. Again, it's been thoughtfully addressed by the Town Manager in this budget, and she's held the line with the Finance Director and the concurrence of the senior staff. But what happens to that workflow load? What happens to that request for 11 FTEs next year? Is that, we kind of think it's one of a series of structural issues that this town is going to have to figure out a way to address. And again, it comes back to our old refrain around prioritization. We applaud the efforts that the Select Board has made in that respect, again, in the last months, and we kind of encourage that to continue to happen. I think that the low-hanging fruit is not necessarily in the CIP, but in how we think about our large municipal projects, and I think that's a consensus here of the Finance The, in addition to kind of that structural, prospective structural challenge, I think we worry about some of the things we referenced in our report that may be on the horizon. The Chatham Elementary School issue, I think there's a consensus in the Finance Committee that Chatham deserves to have its own elementary school and should have its own elementary school. If the cost of that is a half million dollars a year in year one and escalating over time, how long is that model sustainable? We note that the Fire Department has requested, again, not this year, but last year, they requested four FTEs for new firefighters. I think the Fire Chief noted their call log had increased by 500 calls over the last several years, and that the model they have historically relied on, this call firefighter model, really doesn't work any longer, hasn't worked for a number of years. We had a very good discussion this afternoon with Bob Duncanson on, we, the Finance Committee, including the dredging topic. And, you know, Bob pointed out the prospect that we were going to require annual dredging at Stage Harbor entrance, which probably shouldn't come as much of a surprise to anybody over the last couple of years. But again, sort of this looming prospective structural cost that we're going to have to figure out how to manage. So with all these things possibly coming at us, elementary school cost, prospective staffing cost, firefighter cost, annual dredging cost, where are we going to find the resources for those kind of things? And can we free up resources as a result of the consideration or reconsideration of some of the prioritization of some of these larger ticket town projects? So, question. Attendant to that, and it's sort of, for better or for worse, it's kind of become a fallback example for the Finance Committee, but attendant to that is the $11.3 million waterfront bond that was authorized. Again, and we point out in our report, 4.4 million of that, approximately 39% has to date been spent on the completion of two projects and engineering and support work for several others. We now have an estimate for the 90 Bridge Street project, which is, obviously includes a needed upgrade to the town's upweller facility, but that's back to four and a half to five-plus million dollars, depending on the directionality that the town chooses to take in its housing structure. What happens if we run out of the 11.3? I guess it's something that we worry about. Do we just go authorize another pile of money for waterfront improvements? Do we try to work within that as a conceptual budget limitation and adjust the scope and scale of projects to get done what we really need to get done, maybe at the expense of those things that we only want to get done, and redeploy some of these incremental monies? It's all cash is fungible. Do we redeploy that into some of these other needs that were just highlighted? Firefighters, dredging, elementary school carry costs. They're tough policy decisions, but we think they're worth pursuing and having an earnest and open debate on. It just seems that there's kind of too many structural things coming at us at once to not try to figure out how they're all going to line up with one another, along with the other issues. I mean, we still obviously have the COA conversation, which I think your intent, as I understand it, is to put it on the warrant. What's going to happen to that? There's clearly a faction in town that thinks that property is, or that project is too big and too expensive. We also have, obviously, dueling siting issues. So what happens to that if it goes to town meeting with two warrant articles, one for each site? Do we split the vote and end up having that can kicked down the road? You know, not preferably, but that's certainly an outcome. What, how do we, how do we address that issue and deal with that issue in light of all these other prospective structural issues that may be coming our way? You know, I think that's, those are really the headlines. It's, we're not sounding a lot of new notes, I understand that. But we do think there are more new inputs prospectively that require some more thoughtful consideration, all this stuff. How does the prospective COA, if it does go down in a split vote this spring and gets deferred for another year, 18 months, how does that roll into some possible conversation around the elementary school and the 50-plus-thousand-square-foot facility over there? You know, is there a way to do a dispassionate asset utilization, facilities optimization exercise around some of these things? I think we, as a committee, think all that, all those things should be on the table for consideration. I know we've committed to these lovely designs, I'm in favor of one, I think, you know, still of view that it's a little too large personally, but I could certainly vote in favor of one or the other, but maybe there's a different solution that works better for this town, given where we are now and what our aspiration is regarding housing and our long-term viability. So I think that's it. It's much tighter, obviously, than typical years, a little shorter, I think partly, again, reflective of how much time and effort or ability we've had to put into the process. But I think it's also a result of the tremendous focus that the Town Manager and the Finance Director have brought to this exercise with the department heads in the first instance. And we look forward to kind of staying in the game and spending more time on this over the next weeks and months as this document gets further refined.
Stephen, did you, I don't know if you froze. You might have froze. Oh, there you are. Okay. You're okay.
When did I freeze? 20 minutes ago?
No, just a second. Don't worry about it. We heard everything, so either you were wrapping it up and it was a short freeze. Thank you for everything, for your thoughts and comments. Yeah, I'm going to see if anybody has any questions, any of the board members have any questions or comments for Stephen. I see Cory is first. Cory, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank the Chair of the Finance Committee and the members of the Finance Committee. I always appreciate the feedback and insight they put into this document and the discussions. You know, I guess there's two areas I just want to kind of throw out there for a little bit, a little more discussion a little bit, because, you know, the FTEs has always been an interesting discussion, particularly with our Fire Department. That discussion has been floated around for a fair amount of years, and will continue, you know, in my opinion. And I don't know where the right time is. That's an area that we need to, I guess, have some more dialogue on, because if the case count last year was up 500 calls, you know, what is the next step? What is the direction? Because if we don't take on this year, is it next year, et cetera? So that is something I would like to really kind of just take a little more scratch at and kind of have a little more discussion on, because there seems to be a need, for sure. Very supportive of our Fire Department, and, you know, it's something that has been on the books for consideration for a little bit of time. And I just want to make sure that we, if we're not going to act on it now, we're going to act, when might we, or what is our, what is our alternative? And the second area is on the schools. I know we're going to have a, the educational budget discussed later on next month. I know we're looking at a couple, you know, $500,000 more for our elementary school, but we really have to have a comprehensive discussion when it comes to the schools and our elementary school. There was a public hearing two weeks ago, and the School Committee had just prior to their regular meeting, and, you know, there's like $600,000 worth of things that were unfunded in the budget. And I think we need to take a kind of, a good look at what things didn't make the cut this year. How does that impact the school? How does that impact the students? And how does that impact our goal of maintaining a solid school system with affordable housing, unattainable housing, and the traction that we're trying to make right now for the Board's goals? So those are just two things I just want to point out for just further discussion. I appreciate the comments made, and I look forward for future dialogue. Thank you.
Cory, if I could just jump in very quickly, I want to be clear that I didn't mean to infer that there were 500 call increase in cases over the last year, and I think the Fire Chief may be on, but I think it was last three years or so he made a reference to in our presentation. But just to be clear, it was, in my understanding, it's not in the last year.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I just want to let everybody know, just as an aside from what Cory had talked about, and Cory, we can bring up the firefighting issue as our next agenda item, if you want to continue the conversation. Next Thursday, March 4th, Monomoy Regional School District is having a public forum, so mark your calendars on that. But one of the things that we, the Board, had, at the public hearing, had discussed when we had a joint meeting with Horwich, was that we have a public forum. Selectmen de Castro had recommended it, similar to some of the public forums we've had in the past on COVID and economic issues with the town. And so I've asked the Town Manager to sort of look at a timeline and a framework, and two of the things would be the discussion, one of them being major discussion, which would be the future of our elementary school, and want to hear from the public on that, most definitely. So that's going to be an opportune time, Stephen, to be able to have a discussion, at least, and hear from the public on that, because it's a public will, a lot of times, that drives our processes here, obviously, to town government, I mean, to town meeting. Thanks, Cory, for your comments. I think Jeff's next. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And Stephen, thank you once again for your input and your thoughtful commentary on the summation of the FinCom's kind of position, if you will, on your first cut at the budget. I too agree that the operating budget is pretty tight, very tight, maybe perhaps too tight, and maybe we'll talk about it in just a bit. Really appreciate your comments on affordable and attainable housing and the FinCom's prioritization of that item. I thought your paper that was published, I think it was last year now, was very thoughtful in its approach and really, really spot on. I too was disappointed that we didn't kind of get Old Harbor teed up as a potential site for affordable and attainable housing. We can do this in bits and pieces, and I think, given the makeup of the town, we're going to have to do it in bits and pieces, although we can take broad strokes as well, à la Middle Road, et cetera. But I do think that we've done it with Habitat for Humanity here and there, four here, a couple there, you know, Marconi Housing, you know, over there, another model. So I think it's going to take all those efforts. I don't think it's, I don't think it's one particular effort. I think we've got to keep nipping away at it, or keep whacking away at it, if you will, to add to our affordable and attainable housing stock. And I, you know, I go back to something that I think it was in your report, the FinCom report, that, you know, what kind of town do we want to have? And it's very different from, you know, what we're evolving into, I should say, is quite different from what I think most of us would like to have, at least the folks in this forum and in this group. So I'll speak to that more later as well when we get to the transfer fee. Anyway, I do appreciate your input. We have more to come in the Council on Aging. I think it's time to call a question. And then we have a lot more to come on 90 Bridge. The upweller and the reuse of the Coast Guard boathouse has, you know, thrown kind of a wild card, if you will, a little bit into the mix. More, you know, more remains to come on where that finally concludes, but I think it's of interest, it's kind of a neat concept. Where it falls out financially, one doesn't quite know yet, because we really don't know what kind of model might be brought to bear there. So those are basically my comments. I get it on the prioritization, we're really trying to get our hands around, or have really tried to reprioritize or prioritize our projects, if you will. You know, the 11 million, the 11.3 isn't going to go forever, you're right, and we're going to have other needs, I think, as the shoreline evolves or devolves, we're going to have other, you know, other needs that might even become more ascendant. So I think we need to be a little nimble and thoughtful there. But anyway, I always appreciate your input, very thoughtful, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Dean?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Stephen, for your presentation, as always, enlightening and, I think, very helpful to the town. I wasn't going to say anything, but since both you and Jeff brought up Old Harbor Road, I just wanted to say I stand by what I said last week, or whenever we voted it down. I just think it's too little a return to be giving up this choice piece of property, and I think we need to evaluate what's going to happen with the elementary school. And I look forward to the forum that's coming up, and I think everything should be on the table in that forum about the future of the elementary school, including possibly trying to withdraw the school from the district. I'm not advocating that, but I think it should be examined. I do think Jeff just put his finger on something that was in your report from last year, and it's reiterated in your current report, about what kind of town we have, want to have. And I think, in addition to affordable housing and the elementary school, which at our priority-setting session, we highlighted, I think we included, pretty close to the top, the senior center. And it'd be time to call the question, so to speak, on that, because I think what we do for our seniors is also an important part for the future of the town. So with respect to 90 Bridge Street, I think you're spot on as far as taking a look at what is essential there and perhaps separating out what is not essential. I think there's probably general consensus in the town that doing something with the upweller is essential. If the Coast Guard boathouse plan comes forward, it may very well be that we can put the upweller there with the boathouse for a cost that is equivalent to the cost of putting up a newly purpose building. I don't know. We'll see what happens, especially if we can tap into some CPC funds for it. So anyway, those are my comments. But again, I, having served on Finance Committee, I greatly respect the work that you all do, and you're an independent voice in this town, and it's good to have our decisions and thinking tested against a group of nine individuals who don't report to us. Thank you very much. Thank you, Shreem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Peter, my apologies for jumping over you. You're next.
That's all right, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Twice today.
Last, that's right, last but not least. That's okay. Stephen, thank you very much. I, you know, I do appreciate what you and the Finance Committee do, and it is heartening to me that we have a finance group that are more than just bean counters. They're very thoughtful, they're insightful, they look at what's needed in the town, and they look at, and they look at priorities, and I appreciate that. And every time you guys bring in something and you write it, it's clear and brings up a lot of interesting points. I'm going to just take a little bit of a twist on a little bit of what you said about priorities, which I agree, we need priorities. But we have, we have a number, and I've always looked just now, as got critical needs and specified critical needs, and how do we approach these, you know, in a timing way? Can we delete some, or do we have to do them? And I think it's a harder problem than we have than just by setting priorities. And I'll modify a sentence you had, and you can, you could take umbrage with it, if you like, but you said, "We need more aggressive management of the town's priorities rather than simply funding the growing priorities of the community." And I understand what you're saying there. My point is, I think we could just cut a couple of words out and say, "Aggressive assessment management," I think we have to do that, of the town's priorities, considering the funding, funding the growing priorities of the community. And the reason I say that is, you bring it up in the previous paragraphs, and you said it, you know, there are certain structural issues that we're facing right now. The school, that's not going to go away. If we decide we don't want to do that, we change the whole complex, in my personal opinion, of what the town, what a town is. The request for four firefighters, that was a decision that was made with the Town Manager, as you mentioned, and the Fire Chief. We can bring that up again. I think we should talk to it a little bit, anyway. And the FY '20 departmental request for 11 additional full-time equivalent hires. I'm used to people putting in requests for what they I'm used to people putting in requests for what they feel they need. And then they get fiscally constrained. And that's what was done. And, uh, and as far as, you know, the way I look at it is you, 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 we are going to add, we're not adding. We put at the top of our list, affordable, attainable housing and rentals, that's part of that. And plus the growing needs of our seniors. I understand the problem with the senior center. I understand that it's gone up. Wouldn't it be nice to have that six and a half million dollar one now? But if it gets delayed, which, you know, potentially the town, the town will say, what's going to happen? We start throwing in the school? That bothers me because that assumes that we're going to put the, I've heard people say, put the COA at the school. It's not going to be any cheaper as far as I'm concerned, it's just going to get worse. So the, the senior needs, who are half of our, are half of our town right now, are just as important. And affordable and attainable housing cuts across all demographics. So we, I, I look at us not just prioritizing one through 10, but prioritizing and timing. Cause many of these things aren't going to go away. Dredging isn't going to go away. Uh, you know, the school won't go away. Uh, a whole bunch of those issues. Where do we stop? I think, I think where you put your focus on the upweller or, or, and, and maybe cutting that down and a few of the other projects makes sense. But our job is going to be every year having the town manager work with the department heads on what's really needed based upon what the town and the board of selectmen have set as priorities. And that's the way we do it. And that's the way I see it. It's going to be a tough time for us every year, but I think it's something that, that we have to look as a system. Hate to say that, I'm going back to my, my roots, but we have to look at it across the board as to how we focus on what we need to get done. And there, there are, there are lots of big issues. We just have to go after them. You know, maybe bits and pieces or one big one and timing wise. Uh, it's easy to say, but it's going to be a tough job. Thank you very much, Stephen. I, the finance committee does a super job. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Very kind of you.
Thank you. Uh, do, do you have any final thoughts, Stephen? I know you were jotting notes as we were going along.
Yeah, I think I just want to be clear that, that we understand that four firefighters is not something that's been presented to us for consideration this year. It's something that was in the narrative last year. Um, I guess I would offer that historically, which is to say the last five or six years, the, the, I think that there's been a, a shift in the, in the underlying perspective of the finance committee. Obviously, there was a time where we felt that the solution to that problem was better managed through the use of overtime uh, than the prospective cost of firing, of hiring four new firefighters, um, with their attendant benefits. I think the sense that I'm taking from the committee this year is that there's been a shift in that. And there's a sense that, you know, it was driven by the data presented by the fire chief is that there is a real need out there that really can't be managed through a model that doesn't seem to be working, the qualifier fire model. Um, so, you know, time will, time will tell if and when this should come to the finance committee this year, next year, two years, whatever. But I do think I want to just underscore that I believe there has been a bit of a sea change in the, in the way the finance committee would see managing this issue. So otherwise, thanks for the opportunity.
That's appreciated. I just, um, I, I want to thank you. I, we're running congruent on the affordable housing, the need for housing and the priority of what's important for the town. Um, and that's a good sign for, you know, getting things done. Um, it certainly is critical max. Right now, we're at critical timing. Um, so, um, I'm excited to bring, uh, to hear more on the transfer tax later, but to bring some initiatives to, to town meeting. Um, so I'm, thank you very much, uh, tonight, um, for your presentation and, um, to be continued.
Indeed. Well, we're happy to be supportive in any way we can and we'll keep the conversation going.
All right, sounds good. Okay. Thank you, Stephen. Okay, great. Um, all right, so our next order of business is, uh, for, uh, book, um, select boards transmittal of the approval, approved fiscal year 2022 operating and capital budgets to the finance committee. Um, and that's based on our bylaw, um, that that's to be done before March first, which is obviously next week. Um, so I didn't, uh, know if Alex is doing a presentation or Jill, um, but I think we have a couple of more questions we want to sort of bring up before we finalize our thoughts on, and go to a vote. Jill?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So we don't have a presentation for you tonight, um, but what we do is have an agenda report that describes where we are now. And what Alex, um, can present is that we're now, uh, with some adjustments for health insurance, um, and then other few adjustments that we are now down to a 1.56% increase over our COVID FY twenty one core services budget. Uh, previously, we were at 2.03%. And, um, certainly we can talk about any, any questions the board has, however you want to do it. We outlined what the changes have been as we first presented the budget on January nineteenth and some, uh, more of the finality of, of either quotes coming in, as I said, for health insurance and, um, the school department budgets, both, uh, regional schools, the Montmorey Regional School, as well as the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School. We vote those as separate articles and they're still working through that. Um, there has been a decrease though in what was originally in the budget book for the Montmorey Regional School budget that was based on what they just presented. So, um, happy to answer any questions. This is your opportunity. Uh, we, there has been, uh, a point, uh, a couple of years ago where the board did add, uh, a few items back into the budget. And I'm happy to entertain it. And Alex and I, you know, have our resources here if we need us to look up anything. Um, at that time, we added a school resource officer, um, that was, I think, two or three, actually three years ago, as I think of fiscal year. So there has been, otherwise, it's been fairly level with any growth of new staff. Certainly, the fire department hasn't had new firefighters, um, since the 2005 budget. Uh, but with some retirements, we were able to, um, hire new firefighters, as you know. And there's been some realignment for, um, some of the, um, the leadership in the fire, uh, department, such as the EMS coordinator. So, um, happy to answer any of those questions. Capital budget, which is that the budget that is up to nine percent of the operating budget. There's been, uh, no changes to that. It is in your packet. We did update a couple of things, uh, as it relates to, you know, uh, and the Kroll Road intersection project, um, that isn't amount in there, but it's from chapter ninety. And I mentioned that at the last meeting, so that's still there, but, uh, not programmed. And, um, a few other items, but it basically, it hasn't changed much since, uh, we presented it in, um, last month, in January nineteenth. So happy to answer any questions with that.
Okay. Um, so, uh, yeah, I wanted to sort of open up the idea of the firefighter issue, um, simply for the fact that, um, you know, to see if we're not missing an opportunity here. I know that, um, currently, um, the chief has said that they're maintaining the level of service. It's, um, it's becoming increasingly difficult over the summer. And, um, um, and that the, um, overtime is, you know, is, is the general practice of how we've been dealing with this. But, um, oh, it's not a long-term solution. So is now the time that we start to think about, um, should we increase the staff with the firefighter department? Uh, I don't know if everybody's hands up in relation to any of that discussion, but, um, I'll go forward with, um, Dean first and then Corey. Um, and, and then we'll see where we're heading. Okay, Dean?
Actually, Madam Chair, I just forgot one thing that I could add one more. Um, there is a grant that the fire department is going for, for potentially four new firefighters. And that would cover a hundred percent of their benefits and compensation for three years. But it's a highly competitive grant. So I just wanted to put that out there before you get into more discussion about the positions.
Okay. Uh, Dean? You're muted, Dean. Would you mind unmuting? Thank you. Okay.
Yes, Shereen. Um, I, I raised my hand, uh, in connection with several, uh, comments unrelated to the firefighters. And I can defer those comments until later on, if you would prefer that. But I do want to make a comment about the firefighter. I, I was the select board member who, who offered the motion to add the school resource officer on the spot. And that was in the wake of the Parkland school shooting. Uh, and, um, I, I, and we were hearing from the, the police chief. With respect to the firefighters and overtime, of course, it's always been, uh, the understanding, um, going back to, um, my time on the finance committee. Chief Amblesco, uh, was, uh, arguing in, in favor of increasing the, um, uh, the overtime budget because we, we didn't have to pay for benefits, uh, in, in that, in that process and, and, um, it was more manageable. May, uh, it's interesting to hear what the finance committee's, uh, direction seems to be at the present time. Um, but, you know, I, I do want to say that when, when the fire chief was before us a couple of weeks ago, I did not hear him, you know, make a pitch for the, for four additional firefighters. Now, I'm not sure what's changed since, since then. Um, now, Jill, the point that Jill just brought up about, uh, a, a grant, uh, that's great. Uh, maybe, you know, that's something we should be pursuing. And if we could get it, uh, we could take a, a closer look at it. I don't know that this is the moment to make a decision to add four new employees to the town. I, I, I just don't know, don't know. Um, I throw, throw those comments out. So I have other comments, but I'll wait until after we have firefighter discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Let's continue on the firefighter, if that's okay with everybody. Corey?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, first of all, I want to thank, um, our town manager and, and, uh, finance director for the, for the efforts they put into this budget. I mean, I very much applaud their efforts. Um, they're looking out for the, the best interest of the town. Um, you know, sharpening their pencils, et cetera. So, um, they've definitely done their job and beyond. Um, now, it's our job to have some other discussions that kind of nudge them one way or another. Um, you know, the, adding another FTE has always been a, you know, it was always a difficult dialogue. You know, we understand the benefits and, you know, the costs associated with that. Uh, with the fire department, we're looking at potentially four FTEs, cost benefits, et cetera, et cetera. Um, you know, I appreciate the grant being mentioned, but there's no guarantee that would be successful. So we've got to keep that in mind. Um, I would like to keep the conversation or open about potentially having the FTE, uh, for added this year. Um, let the, so, let the finance committee weigh in, um, and kind of get a dialogue. But it might be an opportunity. I, I do think it's something we're, we've been faced with, you know, the last couple of years, having a dialogue with. And at some point, we, we're either going to act on it, um, or have to come up with a plan B. And I don't know what that is. Um, I think we all recognize the importance of our fire department, um, the work they do, the public outreach they perform, um, and how important they are to this community. So, um, while, you know, adding more workforce to the town is, you know, always something we have to tread cautiously with, um, this department would probably be first in line for consideration, uh, for such. So, uh, I, I do have an appetite to, to kind of throw this back, throw this to the finance committee for consideration um, and see if it has merit for this year, um, before just completely walking away from the concept. So, uh, I am supportive for, for future dialogue. I am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, a- as am I. I, I seem to recollect, and I could be wrong, refresh my memory, but I remember the chief saying that, you know, this was an issue. And he was also looking at a different model for dispatch. So that I was thinking that maybe the time is right for kind of doing both to kind of net down the overall cost of additional firefighters. So that's what I sort of remember hearing. I could be totally wrong. But I do remember him talking about a different model for dispatch, which would save a few bucks. We'd be adding a few bucks by adding firefighters as well. So I don't know if it's appropriate not to hear from the chief. Uh, I don't want to put him on the spot, but, uh, I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mi- I wouldn't mind hearing from him, if that's okay.
Jill, is the chief on tonight or?
He is on.
I believe he is.
Okay. Um, is it appropriate that you go, go ahead and talk? Go ahead, sure.
Okay. Yeah, I, I know that, uh, we, we brought this up, I think it was a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, I, that was, we were discussing an increase of $30,000 in the overtime. And I said that, you know, that's what, we keep increasing it because we don't have enough firefighters to cover us. So that's where that started. Um, I wanted four firefighters this year, but the directive we got from, I thought, everybody was, we're going to try to keep the budget as low as we can because of what's going on right now. I asked for them last year. Didn't mean that I didn't want them this year. You know, I'll, I'll, you know, back in 2010 or 2011, the, the town did a study. We paid a lot of money and they were telling us to hire four firefighters back then. And that's when we had ten call people. Now we have zero. So it's since then that we've had an increase of 500 runs and no call people. And the overtime budget keeps increasing. And I said, if that's the way we, we have to do it, we have to do it. But that's not the ideal model because we're burning our people out. So I think that's how the conversation went. I don't, I'm, I'll answer any questions you have.
Okay.
You know, we, we did apply for the grant. Um, it's called the Safer Grant. And it does, uh, cover the cost of four fire, uh, of a firefighter for three years salary and benefits. But you can imagine how competitive that is now. Yeah, you know, the shape that a lot of towns are in. So I, I wouldn't count on that. Uh, we talked about going to county to do our dispatch, but that's three years out anyway. If, if we can get in then, I'm just saying that that's the model that if we can't get the firefighters, that's where we should go. But that doesn't take away the need that we have now.
I guess I, so just a quick follow-up, if I might, Shereen?
Yeah, go ahead and.
Uh, uh, thank you, chief. That, that was helpful. So chief, just, w- what services aren't you able to provide today? Or what are the particular stressors in not having those, those four firefighters today?
Okay, it's not, it's not that we're not delivering the service because we are.
Yeah, I know.
It's just the, the, we're taxing our employees.
Okay.
You know, when, when we keep increasing our overtime budget, they keep working and working and working. And it's not ideal. You know, we have, uh, now our department, um, you know, the average is they've been on the job for 14 years. So we have an older department. And, you know, we, by, by putting people, seven people on all summer, that means that we have almost always two people off because someone's, someone's on vacation, someone's sick, someone has personal time. And you're looking at 48 hours, hours of overtime every day. That has to be covered by somebody. And, you know, a lot of times last summer, it was three people. So it, it's just not ideal. We can't keep doing it. At some, at some point, we're going to break. And even last year, we had some holdovers, you know, people that didn't want the overtime. They had to stay because, you know, it's mandatory to fill to seven. And I just don't, it's just not a good model going forward. And the call people is a whole nother issue. That, that is all about affordable housing and having young people. And, you know, there's a lot of training you have to do. There's requirements for certifications and that model has changed. And none of our surrounding towns are even thinking about the call model anymore. Brewster's going away from it, Orleans, Eastham. It just, it just doesn't work anymore. I was a call guy. That's how I started. As, as most of the guys on the department. You know, that's how you get your foot in the door. And as soon as the full-time job comes, you leave as the call person. So it's wherever you can get in.
Okay, thank you. Um, so can you explain the mandatory stay a little bit? And, and what does that do for, um, you know, morale, so to speak, um, and planning? Do you automatically plan ahead every day that there'll be an overtime slot that you have to fill?
Yeah, what we started last year for the first time for the summer was we added, um, a seventh person three days a week. We did it on the weekends. Um, so that means that somebody had to work an overtime shift every day, every night, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, besides the other people that were off because we maintained seven all summer. The reason I asked for the increase in the overtime this year was so we could do it all the time. Because, you know, days of the week don't really matter to us. That's, you know, we, we answer calls when people call us and it's not necessarily Monday or Saturday or day or night. So I, you know, I, yeah, I'm, look, I, you know, we want to play ball with everybody and we know the situation that's out there. And that's why I didn't push for it. But, you know, we, we're going to have to do something.
Okay. Uh, so from my perspective, I'm seeing, um, one of the most top serviceable, um, departments in, you know, aside from the police, um, as far as public safety and wellness is concerned, is being, you know, tapped quite a bit. And this is to me, um, about quality of life for the people that work here in this town and for their well-being as well. So it, it, you know, I guess if the town, if we're feeling that we're being served by this, by the department and the organization of firefighters, and we deeply appreciate that, especially with. with everything that went on with COVID and the stress that happened there. But let's just take COVID out of the picture here and really think about what we're actually doing to our employees here in not having, you know, enough, enough people to sort of service the town in a more holistic and fair manner. I'm not, I'm not a guy, I'm not a, not a gal that has worked in the corporate world, so I don't understand the structure of that, but I'm just seeing it from a perspective of, of the folks that, we live and work with each other in the town and just, I'd like to see if we could consider increasing the staffing to some level. I'm not sure if that's an extra staffer or whether that's the full four, but that's the general direction I'm going right now. I see Peter's got his hand up, and then Dean.
Good. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, the last time the Chief was here, I had asked him about the $30,000, whether or not that would be enough, and he answered, I thought, pretty well, honestly. He said, "It's a Band-Aid, and it's how we, how we will continue." And I appreciated that. And at the time, I was thinking, okay, the call center stuff is probably going out, so we could transfer that over to the county. What I didn't realize is it was going to take three years, and I'm going back thinking, and I think he said that. I think it was, I think the Chief said it was going to be two or three years. It didn't register with me. I guess the question is, does that make sense in the long run? The question is, you know, you have to ask the question, do you need four? I'm sure you do. A fire, I'm saying I'm sure you do, because it would be, I would think, a whole, a team at a period of time. I look at the Fire Department and the Police Department, and it's going to, I hope, give me a little latitude here. It's not like running a corporation. It's more like a military operation. You have people that are dedicated to get a job done, they're, put their lives on the line, they do it for the local people that are here. EMTs are all over the place, and you can't say enough about them. You can't say enough about our professionalism of both our police force and our Fire Department. So, I'm glad we have an opportunity to reconsider this, and I'm certainly, I think, it makes sense to have the right kind of people available to do the job. And I would assume that when you hire, you hire a mix of experienced and non-experienced folks, but, you know, I guess it's the luck of what comes at after you. I mean, it's, I'd just like to hear whether, do you really, how important it is to get four? I think it is, but I just want to hear why.
Well, if we, if we get four, then it maintains, maintains the same level of staffing all the time. If we get two, then half the time we're where we are now, but there would be less overtime. So, you know, right now, we average 400 hours of overtime per person. So, that's 10 40-hour weeks these guys are working, besides their regular shifts. So, and then, and you know that our guys are out there volunteering, and, you know, they, they're dedicated. But, you know, I would ask for a minimum of two, and then see if we can get two from the SAFER Grant. You know, and then, if we could go to county, then our staffing level would be ideal.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks. Jill, what does that look like numbers-wise for two additional staff folks?
It looks, with salary and benefits, it's about $85,000 per firefighter. So, as I look in the budget for FY '22 under Public Safety, our most recent hire is at, is approximately, you know, $73,000, and then there's, there's benefits and some outfitting that would need to.
That's, I'm sorry, it's, the first step, I think, is 62, depending on if it's a paramedic or an EMT, so.
Okay. Yeah, there's an EMT and paramedic stipend for that, so that's, that's all in.
Okay. That's the whole. Dean?
Yeah, thank you. This is just in the follow-up, since the Chief has spoken, and I, Chief, I really appreciate the deeper discussion tonight, because I think we were fairly high-level a couple of weeks ago. And it's, it's a, it's given me an opportunity to understand the issue more comprehensively. And I was going to suggest that we task the Town Manager and the Chief to come up with a plan or proposal for adding some staff, but we may have the workings of it right now, given what Jill and the Chief just said, because two additional staff is about two cents, just over two cents on the tax rate, I think. And that's quite, quite palatable, especially given what the Finance Committee is thinking these days, which is 180 from the way they were thinking when I was on the Finance Committee. But I would like to see some sort of information or projection on what it would mean for the overtime budget. How much could we, could we reduce it this year if we add two firefighters? I think, I think some concrete information about that would make this much more saleable. We have an excellent department, they have great morale. I'd hate to see the morale, you know, go down, because we're putting too much stress and pressure on them. And the idea of applying for the grant, I know it's difficult to get it, and it's good for only three years, I'm my understanding, but it's maybe part of a package, along with the dispatch with the county, that might make this workable. So, I'll just throw those comments out. Thank you.
Further comment? Go ahead.
It's the Chief. Yeah. No, one of the things that makes the grant more difficult is, you know, they've offered the 100% financing instead of 75%, but it's in the same pool of money. So, there's going to be less firefighters that they get through the grant, they're just going to pay more for them, towards them, I should say.
Okay. All right. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure I need a study. I think we've heard about what it's going to cost for two additional firefighters, you know, what kind of support we have, but I would, I would move that we send the budget to the Finance Committee with two additional firefighters.
Do I have a second on that from Cory? Do we have any further discussion on this? And if we don't, we'll take a vote on it then. Cory?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Peter? Peter, you're muted.
Sorry, Madam Chair. Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. Okay. I'm going to move forward with two additional firefighters into the budget. Okay. So, can you, okay, you're welcome. All right. So, just to move forward, I know that there were several other discussion points that I know Dean wanted to make on the budget before we move forward for a transmittal.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Jill, or Alex, on the summaries page, the very first page, under, right in the middle, where as you have a line that says subtotal, in the right-hand column, it says a 493% increase under the Town Manager, the difference between the FY '21. Is that, is that a correct number, or is that a mistake?
If I may, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Alex.
Thank you. That is because we have a placeholder in there for bonding, not of which articles have been approved yet, but there's a placeholder of $20 million, which includes potential for Council on Aging, the $7 million for wastewater drainage. So, again, that hasn't been voted, but that would be that much of an increase. But again, that is all funds that would be borrowed for through the water revenue.
Okay. And the next question is on the summaries, it's third page. It also says summaries under the hotel motel excise tax. So, the Town Manager is putting this revenue in at $950,000. The department estimate was 450, the budget last year was 450, the actual was 1.898. So, we're basically doubling the last year's budget in terms of what we anticipate for the hotel motel excise. Is that, is that what we're doing, and is that justified?
Yes, that's an accurate statement. And again, looking at the short-term rental tax that came in for the first two quarters of the year, even though some of the other estimates, such as meals, were down for the second quarter, we feel that we can make that estimate, and so that's inaccurate. You know, we feel that's conservative. We'll know more as we get towards the end of the year. So, before we set the tax rate, this could be adjusted upwards if we see that the receipts are coming in that would support an increase.
So, last year, we'd budgeted the receipts at 57%.
Correct.
All right. What is, what is it this year? Is it?
We're up to 68%.
68%. Usually, we've done it at 80, right?
Correct. 80 to 85.
Okay. And my last question, Jill brought this up, the Crow Road intersection. Because at our priority-setting session, there was a consensus, I think, among the board members, that we might want to consider terminating that project. I just think it's important that that information be transmitted to the Finance Committee. I don't, I'm not suggesting any edits to this document or a vote that we take, but I think when you communicate that, Alex, you're the one, you and Jill usually are the ones that are presenting this budget to the Finance Committee. I just think that's an important piece of information. We took no votes, I understand that, and Jill has indicated that she's going to come back to us with cherry and make a presentation on the Crow Road thing, but I do think it's important that there be an understanding, which is acknowledged, I think, in the Finance Committee report, that we're, we're considering possibly bringing that project to a close. Thank you, Madam Chair. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Dean. Jeff?
Yeah, I just said two, one of which was the Crow Road intersection that Dean just addressed. But the other one was, I just want to be clear as we transmit this, and I want the folks watching and those that might watch a tape to be clear that what we have for the school budget in here is assuming the statutory amount that is current. It does not include any potential increase that I think will come before the town in a fall town meeting. So, I just wanted to emphasize that point and make sure that everybody's really clear on that. That's all. But otherwise, I think the transmitter looks great.
Okay, great. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I think we need a motion here. Anybody want to offer one up?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Dean.
I move that we transmit the proposed FY '22, 2022 operating and capital budgets to the Finance Committee per the Town of Chatham general bylaw, which requires submittal on or before March 1, 2021.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. So, let's take a vote. Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. All right. Do we have a second? Yeah, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I move that we place the FY 2022 operating capital, and operating and capital budget articles on the town meeting warrant for the annual town meeting in 2021.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a second. Let's take a vote. Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. All right.
Madam Chair?
Do we have a recommendation? Go ahead.
I move that we recommend the FY 2022 operating and capital budget articles to the annual town meeting for 2021.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Let's take a vote. Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. All right. Passed and approved.
Thank you so much.
You can check that one off, Jill. And Alex? Thank you, Alex. Thank you, Jill, for, for wonderful process, yet again, going through this.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. So, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is housing-related special legislation, an act establishing a real property transfer fee in the Town of Chatham. And I understand that Jeff had brought this up to be considered and has been working on this with, with town staff and with the, with our town council. And I'm not sure, Jeff, are you going to make the presentation? Is that who's making the presentation?
Yeah, I'll kick it, I'll kick it off, Shereen, and then Pat's on the line, and he'll be able to give us some background as well and some, some history, if you will, and be able to answer more of the technical, the technical legal questions that I know will, will transpire here. And I think a lot of the questions that were posed by Ms. Freeman and Ms. Gibbs initially will be answered, certainly, I hope, by the, by the end of our deal here tonight. So, anyway, what I'm proposing, what I'm proposing for the town meeting and for the legislature as well is special legislation that establishes a transfer fee in the Town of Chatham for conveyances of real property, of real estate. And this is not meant to be a tax or a fee, I should say, on the seller of real estate. It's a fee on the purchaser of real estate. Now, the seller's responsible for its ultimate remittance, but it's intended to be a fee on the buyer. I've seen this in Manhattan, I've seen it elsewhere, that it's part of the closing. So, the fee will be assessed at the closing, and the seller's attorney is responsible at the closing for remitting it to the town treasurer. What I'm proposing is a half a point, or 50 basis points, a half a percentage point, not 5% as was initially, or as was stated this evening, but half a percentage point on sales of property, real property, conveyances of real estate, $2 million, and in excess of $2 million. But the fee would start, if you sell a piece of property for $2 million, the buyer is assessed a fee of $10,000. Now, why? What's the logic behind this? Well, the hot real estate market, over the number of decades here in Chatham, has accelerated and exacerbated the value of real estate, putting affordable housing, frankly, out of the reach of most of our local residents. And if we're going to have a long-term funding source for affordable and attainable housing, this is one vehicle, I think, that would be very successful in so doing. The monies sent to the treasurer here in the town would be sent and be deposited in the housing trust. Now, we have new legislation coming forward to recreate that housing trust, but that housing trust is meant to be for the purchase and support of affordable and attainable housing. Affordable up to 100%, attainable up to 200% AMI. So, it is not meant to be for OPEB, it's not meant to be for any other intended expenditure, but for affordable and attainable housing. And I think that has, that resonates. It resonates for me, and I think it's appropriate, given the ratcheting up of values overall here in the Town of Chatham. Folks want to come to town, then they can pay a fee to enter this wonderful town, and that fee can be redistributed, if you will, to support folks that they can afford to live here. We can offer affordable and attainable housing, whether it's land or the purchasing of land by the trust and/or its development and our investment. So, that is the concept. I watched it go down in Manhattan very successfully. Their threshold, frankly, is a lot lower than $2 million. $2 million. I chose as a place to start, if you will, based on a model that Nantucket has out there, and I think it has legislation in front of the legislature right now. And I did some, some calculations. If you looked at the sale of real estate for the Town of Chatham, that was published in the Cape Cod Times between the dates of January 25th and January 29th, it's what they publish every week, for the real estate sales. Had we had this half a percent, now, there was one sale for $10,600,000, and there was a sale for 4.3 million, one for $3 million, and one for 2.1 million. Had we had this half a percent fee in place, we would have generated $100,000 for the Affordable Housing Trust one, $100,000, the Affordable Housing Trust one. And that, again, that's because of one sale in particular driving that number of 10 million, but we've had sales historically here, you know, in excess of 10 million. We've had them 12, 15, 20, 25, et cetera. So, not intended to, not intended to whack the local residents that's selling the lifelong residents that they're lucky enough to be able to sell for $2 million, but it's intended to be passed on to the buyer to fund our affordable trust. I have no inkling to do anything else with that, OPEB or anything else. There are other models out there. Again, this is modeled after Nantucket. I'm sure you guys have, it's a 10-year deal, so it'll be in place for 10 years. We can modify that if, you know, if one wanted, if people felt strongly that it was too long a time period. The way it's written right now, there are five-year extensions thereafter. We're, you know, this was typified or called bold. I don't think it's bold, I think it's a needed mechanism to get monies to fund, for money where our mouth is, to show our serious intent to support affordable and attainable housing in this town. And I like the logic of the approach, I like the synchronicity of the approach, I like the logic of it. So I'll end it there, open up to questions, obviously, and I really appreciate Jill being here and Pat being here to answer questions as we go forward. I'm not the legal beagle here, but I really, really think the concept is appropriate, and I support it a whole lot.
Jeff, we appreciate you putting this all together and taking the initiative on this. It's been taken a village of selectmen to sort of build up an infrastructure here in town that's going to support our families and affordable and attainable housing. So I think this is one piece of the puzzle to make it all work. Dean, you have your hand up, do you want to go first?
Sure.
And then Peter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a couple of questions, perhaps Pat might need to answer them, but the first one is just a question as to whether this is a typo on the third page under Section 2. It's on the third page and it's six lines up from the bottom, the sentence that, the line that begins simultaneously with the time of transfer of the transfer. My question is whether the phrase "of" transfer is superfluous or is just a typo. I call that to your attention, I don't know if you.
I will.
I didn't understand it.
Yeah, yes, Dean, I will take a look at that. That language was taken directly from the Nantucket bill that's pending. I can, we can certainly clean that up. In fact, to a point Jeff had made earlier, there are multiple models of these real estate transfer fee acts out there. There are presently, I would say, eight or nine different bills pending before the General Court. Two of them will apply statewide. If they're adopted, they will amend the general laws, and others have been brought forward by individual towns. This is one of the more comprehensive models that's out there. Province towns, on the other hand, is much simpler, it's much shorter, much more direct. So I will revise that for clarification purposes.
Yeah, sure. Have any of these models been adopted yet by the legislature?
Not to my knowledge, no. Several of them commenced their committee hearings last January, and with the COVID outbreak, you know, the General Court's business kind of came to a halt in large part, and to my knowledge, none of them have been adopted of yet. The Nantucket, in fact, has had one, a bill filed with the legislature, I believe, for five years in a row. I believe this is the fifth term in which they've had such a transfer fee act pending, never been approved to date.
Okay. So just a couple of comments, and I wrote down all the questions that Gloria Freeman posed. I thought they were very legitimate and interesting questions, by the way. Let me just pull a couple of them up. She asked the question whether the transfer fee, I'll use the word fee, that's a micro caucus term for taxes.
That's a good one, selectmen.
Thank you. I was expecting some retort on that. She asked whether, and I thought of this myself, whether the fee would apply to the excess, only to the excess over $2 million. And I think I read the legislation to mean that it would apply to the full value of the house, so 2.5 million in the example that she gave. My question is, is there any legal impediment to that, where someone who has a house that's valued at $1,999 is not going to be subject to any fee on transfer, but the person who has a house that's 2.5 is going to be subject to not just the $500,000 over 2.5, but all of it up to? Has anyone really looked at that legally to see whether that's sustainable?
I wouldn't see any legal issue with it, per se, Dean. What some of the other models of these transfer fees do provide is that only that portion above a certain threshold amount is subject to the percentage fee. So there could be a cutoff point, for example, we could establish $2 million as a threshold for sales. Anything that sells below $2 million would not be subject to the fee. That portion of consideration received for sales above $2 million could be subject to the fee. So that is one way that that situation you noted can be avoided. There's a baseline threshold established, and the fee application would only apply to the excess amount above the base.
We did that with the proposed surtax for the OPEB that was rejected at our town meeting. I think the first $500,000 in value was exempted. So the next question has to do with the threshold of $2 million, per se, and this was one of Ms. Freeman's questions, but I thought of it myself. The values of property in this town continue to rise, so I was, it's conceivable that at some point the $2 million may be low after a period of time. And is it possible to come up with a self-adjusting formula so that the threshold is adjusted each year depending upon the formula that would keep pace with the increasing median values or average values of real estate in the town? Can something like that, could something like that be added to replace the simply static $2 million?
Yes, it could. And in fact, some of the bills pending presently before the legislature do have such an adjustment factor incorporated therein. They are based on the median sale price of homes in the town, or one of them even has a provision in there that broadens the adjustment scale, if you will, to a countywide basis because the values in that particular, in a particular town are not reflective of the general regional value. So yes, that could be done.
And the last point I wanted to make, and I hadn't thought of this, but it's an interesting proposition that, again, Ms. Freeman asked, would it be legally possible to simply limit the application of this fee only to those houses that are purchased as secondary homes as opposed to full-time residences in Chatham? I know there's probably going to be an administrative problem in making the determination.
Right.
But would it be legally permissible to do something like that? Has anyone tried that? Is that a problem? I'm sorry, let me just finish. Jeff makes a very good point. People want to live in Chatham and buy an expensive house in Chatham, then they should be expected to contribute to the solution of the affordable housing issue. So with that made.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any such model out there now, and I would suggest that there would likely be some pushback if there was a disparate treatment, if you will, of property owners within town, even though this is not a tax, per se. It is a fee that applies generally to real estate transactions. And if we were to carve out exceptions between those full-time residents of the town and those part-time residents, I wouldn't be surprised if there would be some type of constitutional challenge based on disparate treatment or, you know, there's no real way to distinguish between values of property as they relate to full or part-time residents. And I think it would be difficult to find a compelling governmental interest that could withstand a constitutional challenge, should such an argument be raised.
Thank you very much. Those are my questions. I'll just end by saying, I'm not sure yet how I'm going to vote on this, but I'm anxious to hear what the other select board members have to say. And I do thank and commend Jeff for bringing this forward. I know the Finance Committee also brought it forward as well, but I'm generally skeptical of gunning people in the wallet. Thank you.
Thanks, Dean. Jeff, did you want to add something?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to ask, I just want to make sure we followed up on the questions that were asked, the two-thirds question, Pat, that was raised. It's a two-thirds to pass this in town, and it's a two-thirds to amend it as well, I think. Is that correct? Well, actually, it would only require a majority vote of town meeting to get this petition filed, because in essence, what we're asking town meeting to do is authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for special legislation. As you know, we've done that many times, that only requires a majority vote. As Ms. Freeman noted, there is a provision in the agreement that would require a two-thirds vote of the town meeting in order to make adjustments to the fee amounts and so forth. I would suggest that the rationale for that two-thirds requirement is to get the ball rolling here, to get the initial legal authority to do what we're proposing to do, requires an action of the General Court. We will, in fact, have a statute adopted by the General Court and the Governor that authorizes us to proceed in this regard. Therefore, I think that any substantive amendments, particularly to the critical factors such as the percentage or the threshold values that the town should choose to make thereafter, are subjected to that higher quantum of vote, a two-thirds vote, because we're basically stepping into the shoes of the General Court in making those changes. Thank you, Pat. I have one follow, one quick follow-up, if I might. If during the course of the 10-year period, the first 10-year period, we decided that we wanted to adjust, town meeting could go amend that by two-thirds during that.
That is correct.
The way the legislation's written, okay, thank you.
Great, thanks. Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know what? Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. As I made a comment the last time this was brought up, the last couple meetings or whatever it was, I was a, I'm not a big fan of putting fees or taxes, no matter how you call it, right, on things like this, mainly because they seem to be hidden, you know, and they need to be hidden from things that you should address directly. But I think in this case, and generally, given that, as was noted, you know, the great disparity we have between an ever-changing and growing housing market and the middle class that can't live here, I agree with trying to do something in this area. I think Jeff has brought forth a simple way to do it. It's been done in other areas with $2 million being the threshold. I particularly like the 10 years with the sunset provision, and I like the idea, obviously, of the buyer paying. The questions that were brought up, that Dean brought up about, okay, what do we, why not increase, you know, do it, do it above the threshold, $2 million or whatever that is, that brings up some other questions. I don't know how difficult that would be, and I'm not sure how Jeff would feel about it, because I didn't really, I thought about it and then discounted it. The amount of percentages that you would do after that should have to increase. You can't just give a half a percent on 500, I believe, because we're not going to get anywhere by doing it. You know, so what is that number? Then, you know, we'll have to decide what that number would be. And instead of 10 years, having some way to tie it to a, tie it to some kind of an average home price as they increase, or some kind of a metric that you would use is another issue. That would be simpler, and I was curious as to whether, I would, I thought maybe that Jeff had brought that up the last time and then maybe thought about it a little bit. But in general, I agree with doing this, and, you know, it really does go against the grain to put another tax on people. But we are in a different situation, in a critical situation, and there are a number, I say this all the time, critical situation, yeah, we are, when it comes to what this town is going to look like and what we're going to be. And affordable housing is something that we have to step up to. This is one way to ensure for a short period of time, for 10 years, that it is taken care of and it's done by the buyer. I don't agree that it should be broken up between, you know, summer residents and not summer residents. So that's my thought on it. I just want to see how difficult it would be to do something differently than what Jeff has recommended. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. I just want to put it in perspective a little bit for everybody, that the median income for Barnstable County for a single person right now, based in 2019, is $36,000. So $2 million home assessment, I think, is pretty fair and equitable going forward in what we're doing. Let's see, Cory, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I'd like to get behind this, I just have a couple of questions to kind of ease some of my concerns. You know, we can, we talk, because we tried something with this for OPEB a couple of years ago, and I remember some of the comments, and having OPEB as a goal and affordable housing as a goal, two totally different discussions. So I think it is much more support for affordable housing, and it should be. When we have like transfers to family members and other exemptions, can we comment, or can we kind of expand a little bit on that? Also, and I hate to look at the unintended consequences side of things, but I'm throwing this out for consideration, but I'm trying to wrap my head around this. If we have a certain threshold, we set a certain threshold, and houses above that threshold, you know, trigger, are we going to create a market for the homes that are below that market, that are there going to be a group of investors or entities that are going to try to take those homes because they're under that threshold? And would that defeat some of the progress we're trying to make for the affordable and attainable housing? Because those houses now are under the threshold, they're not going to be taxed or processed with a fee. Is there any concern of that in the discussion? And I would very much appreciate some input on that.
Any comments? Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I could comment briefly. In one of the acts that's been presented to the House, Cory, this is one that would amend the general laws, that would apply to all cities and towns in the Commonwealth. There are two, it's a, there are two different fee structures involved. One fee would be assessed at a much lower rate for typical real estate transactions, resident-to-resident, homeowner-occupant to homeowner-occupant. There is a much higher fee, and it was substantially higher, as I recall, for what are called speculative transfers. So if a developer were purchasing a property with the intent of, you know, building additional housing, demolishing, rebuilding, he or she would have to pay a higher percentage transfer fee, given the nature of that transaction. Something like that could certainly be worked into the language of a bill if the Board felt that was a substantial concern.
Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, and in terms of the exemptions, there's a whole list of exemptions in the legislation itself. Interfamilial, corporate partnership, et cetera, transfer to a governmental unit, transfer to the town would be exempt. So there's some very particular exemptions that Pat can speak to them as well, but Pat has also kind of, you know, lifted from other legislation that has withstood the test of time, if you will. Perhaps Pat could speak to that. Sure. Through you, Madam Chair. We presently have 12 or 13 exemptions in this particular draft act. Again, they were abstracted specifically from the Nantucket model. The Province Town model has far fewer exemptions. They can be added to or detracted from as the Board deems appropriate. The primary thrust of the exemptions is to exempt transfers of real estate interests which are not, in essence, for consideration, or are merely interorganizational transfers amongst corporations, trusts, divisions of marital assets through divorce and separation proceedings, transfers of property that are located both in Chatham and in another community are exempted because it would be difficult to allocate the fee assessment on the value of a single transaction in two communities. Transfers from corporate entities to stockholders, transfers from corporation or partnerships or limited liability companies at the time of its formation, transfers to a mortgager in the course of a foreclosure proceeding, or a transfer in lieu of a foreclosure to a mortgager. Transfers to charitable organizations are exempted in this particular model. As is the transfer made As is the transfer made when land is partitioned by court order merely to divide the equitable interests in property. And any transfer generally that has no consideration involved, or that is intended to merely confirm, correct, or supplement a prior transfer that has been made for consideration, would be exempted as well. As I said, I believe the overall intent of this classification of exemptions would be to focus on those transfers of interest where there is consideration being exchanged amongst parties. It's not merely a legal transfer for internal reorganization purposes. It's not an interfamilial transfer as part of a divorce or separation proceeding. It's not a confirmatory transfer, just modifying or revising the level of interest held. We can modify that, as I noted, as the board deems appropriate, to either increase or decrease the level of exemptions from the fee assessment.
Jeff?
Yeah, if I might, thank you. The exemptions for me, when I studied them, kind of speak toward assessing a fee only on those transactions that are truly arms-length with consideration. Those transactions that aren't truly arms-length and lack consideration would not be assessed a fee, they'd be exempt. That's how I, when I read them, read through them very carefully, and, you know, there's a lot of them. But I think it's important to enumerate them, because folks will try to not pay a fee at some point. And it's very important to understand what conditions arise for an exemption or not.
Right.
Okay. Any further questions or comments from the board? Okay, so what's our next action on this? Do we have any amendments that we want to consider? Do we have, do we vote to see if we want staff to prepare a warrant article on this? Is there, should we just move this down the road another day? What's the flavor of the committee, of the board? Anyone? Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, no, I'd just like to, I'd like to hear from everybody. I mean, you know, I want townsfolk to know that if they leave their property to their, you know, their children, they're not going to get, you know, there's not going to be a fee assessed. I mean, I'm sure there's other questions that arise, so, you know, I'm ready to go tonight, but I want to hear from the rest of the board.
Okay, Peter. Dean, then, Peter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I'll support asking the staff to prepare an article, and I'll support forwarding an article, if it's appropriately drafted, to go to town meeting. I'm not sure I'm going to support a recommendation to town meeting to approve it. I'd rather see the matter disposed of at town meeting upward down. I just wanted to add one additional comment. And the reason, one, I think it needs to be considered, what, if this were to be adopted in this form or something akin to it, what would be the impact on the usage of CPC funds in the town of Chatham? The Community Preservation Act surtax, it collects approximately $900,000 a year, plus there is, there are matching funds. And they're obligated to spend really only about $100,000 on affordable housing. And there are a lot of competing issues or items for those funds in the area of recreation and open space and historical preservation. And I could see this possibly functioning as a disincentive on the part of the community preservation process from applying a significant portion of community preservation funds for affordable housing. And we did approve sending to town meeting an article calling for special legislation to be able to tap into CPA funds for attainable housing. So that's, it may not be a major issue, but it is something that is concerning to me. I guess I would be more encouraged to support this if there were a concomitant reduction in the surtax for community preservation. But I'm not proposing that, but, you know, I think that would draw a lot of ire in the town. But anyway, I would support, the bottom line for tonight is I would support asking the town manager to prepare an article with town council. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to let Jeff comment, because he seemed to want to.
Thank you, thank you, Shereen. And Dean, the CPC money's come ultimately from the tax rate, from our personal property taxes. This does not. This is a fee assessed on buyers of real property in Chatham that has been ever accelerating over time. It's a totally different funding source. That doesn't negate or obviate the need for other funds from CPC, or negate their ability to demarcate funds for affordable and attainable housing, should they want to. But it also, if it proves successful, would free up the CPC to concentrate on other projects rather than just affordable and attainable housing. This is another funding source that is more regular than not, than relying on a CPC ask every year for, oh, could we please have 500 grand? Could we please have 800 grand? Could we please have a million dollars this year? Well, this is, this is a funding source that'll provide the Affordable and Attainable Housing Trust a foundation, a true foundation from which to work, rather than asking the CPC every year for it. And the only other way, only other way we really get funds for affordable and attainable housing into the trust is from developers saying, I'll kick in a couple hundred grand if you allow me to do this and that. That's the really only funding source we have to develop affordable and attainable housing in the town of Chatham. So, and that's not, that's not a regular enough flow. This will allow us to get a flow of funds with regularities. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Peter?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to make a comment similar to what Jeff said about a constant flow of money into affordable housing. I would point out, though, there is a sunset clause on this, which I think is important. And I would support having a warrant article written up, just as this is. I don't know if it's possible to look at the comments that were made about, you know, let's look at something above $2 million as far as a baseline, just to get it out of the way and understand it. Because if it's still only one-half or 1%, you know, that's not going to be enough funding to go through. You'd have to increase that somewhat. I don't know if that muddies the water too much. I'm pretty good with it now, but the question was asked. So I'm a numbers guy. I kind of normally like to see what would happen, but otherwise, I'm supportive. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks. I'm supportive of moving forward with this as it's written for now, and then have staff go ahead and develop an article. I think it's important to continue the conversation and understand that this is a build for a lot of what we've been working on over the last couple of years as a board. And funding is a critical part of programming, and especially when it would come to attainable housing versus the affordable housing mechanism. So this is, this is, as Jeff said, this is going to be building a foundation that we can work off of and expect and understand, you know, look at trends and know that there'll be money coming in. As far as the $2 million right at the top and start there, I don't think that that's a big, a big ask, to have it start at $2 million. I'm sure that you'll see, you may see sales at $1,999, perhaps to avoid it. But then again, it would appear that we'd be looking at things that were a little higher. So I'm supportive of moving this forward with staff taking a look at putting an article together. And I don't know if we need consensus on this or vote. I just, Jill, what do you, what do you need from us to move this forward?
If it's appropriate.
Okay, Corey, do you have, or are you going to offer a motion?
No, I'm fine. I had a question actually for Pat. I'm going to myself spinning here a second. I'm fine with the draft being sent forward. In theory, if this were to go to town meeting, and you put set a threshold of, say, $2 million, an amendment on the town meeting floor, can it, it can go up, but it can't go down, or vice versa?
Yeah, you would.
I don't think that would apply in this particular.
It wouldn't apply.
Okay.
What we could do is, there will be changes in our likelihood to the text, you know, made in the General Court, if and when it gets up there. What we could do is put a clause in the town meeting motion, as we have done in the past, I believe, indicating that if there is any substantive change to the terms hereof, it must first be approved by the Board of Selectmen. I don't know if you'd want to go back to town meeting again for rehearing, but it would at least give the Board of Selectmen that ultimate check to approve the modification that's proposed by the General Court before we submit it for our full approval.
Okay, so ultimately, if the threshold became an issue on a town meeting floor, there's some flexibility?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion or comments? Okay, next steps? Everybody want to offer a motion? Jeff?
Yeah, I move that we direct the town manager to draft a warrant article for the May slash June town meeting, the next town meeting, for our review and recommendation.
Do I have a second? I heard Dean's second. Okay, let's take a vote. Peter?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
The chair says aye. Okay. All right, you have, you have your direction, Jill. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jeff, for putting that together.
Thank you.
It was great. All right, and Pat, thank you as well for weighing in. Thank you. Okay, our next is 2021 annual, I still have a problem saying 2021. 2021 annual town meeting articles review, that is the stormwater article ballot question and general bylaw amendment town time of meeting. So Dr. Bob has put together some information for us on stormwater article. Is it Jill? Jill, are you making it, or is Bob?
Dr. Bob is still here, so.
Yeah, I'm still here.
Do you want to turn your phones?
Yeah, this article was originally brought to the board back at your January 26th meeting. And at that time, in kind of a last-minute change, we proposed adding $300,000 to the article for Main Street in the vicinity of the Eldridge Garage property, where I'm sure the board is aware, the last year and a half or two years or so, there's been a flooding problem. At the board's direction, we went back and reviewed the basis of the article and to determine whether or not we could accommodate some or all of that extra $300,000 within the 4.5 million as it was proposed. Working with our consultants, we did identify that we could carry about $140,000 for the project in this article. I subsequently met with the DPW director, and we've determined several other sources, including Chapter 90, as well as the existing DPW drainage account. And so we feel we could accommodate the Main Street fix, if you will, without increasing above the 4.5 million as it was originally proposed. So the only change to the article is we added a paragraph onto the explanation to basically include that Main Street work in the explanation. As I indicated in my cover memo, the original article of 4.5 million for the three projects, Main Street Parking Lot at Town Hall, the Fish Pier and Crawl Road Phase II, have been listed on the 2021 Intended Use Plan by the SRF. And we could have discussions with SRF to see if we could also cover the Main Street Eldridge Garage work, given that that wasn't in our original application to them. So if it doesn't, we still have the money, we just would not be able to get it at 2% interest. We'd have to get it, that portion at whatever rate the town would normally be bonding for. So with that, happy to answer any further questions.
Thanks, Bob. Jeff, then Peter?
Yeah, the question I had was, you know, the cost of the improvements in the Eldridge area, Main Street, the 50 to 300, what's baked into here?
It basically turns out that there's a longer stretch of road involved from a high point. I was, when I gave my number, I was thinking really just of the stormwater infrastructure, you know, the leach pits and whatnot, but there will have to be some work out on the road itself. And that's why we felt we could cover that portion with Chapter 90 funds.
Okay, I just, okay.
Okay. Peter?
Yeah, I had, thank you, Madam Chair. I had the same question. And otherwise, though, I think it's always nice to see something not go up and stay, and take care of the things that we need. You know, this could go to people. Thank you.
Okay. Dean?
Thank you, Shereen. Bob, with respect to the location near the Eldridge Garage, so that the proposed work would not be on the Eldridge property, it would be on the street?
It would be a combination of both. More than likely, the drainage infrastructure, the leach pits and leach basins will be on the Eldridge Garage property, because we have plenty of space there to site those, and they'd all be underground, so, you know, they'd be under the new area, the area where the new parking lots proposed. But there would also be some rework of the drainage out in the street to get it to flow where we need it to flow.
So the purpose of this in that area would be to address the flooding concerns that we obviously see as very visible and that the neighbors have been concerned about?
Right, yeah. We decided to try to do it through this article, because as you know, we don't know whether or not the Eldridge Garage Property Project is going to move forward or not, and we wanted to be able to address the drainage flooding in the short term.
But should that other project move forward, this is a good first step?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And the last question is, will we know prior to the annual town meeting whether DEP will allow us to include this in the Intended Use Plan?
We could certainly try to have that conversation with them before then, yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, any further questions on this? Nothing? All right. Do we want to vote this now, or are we going to wait and? What do we need to do next? Yeah, go ahead.
I moved, I guess this is replacement. Is that correct, Jill?
Yeah.
This is right place. I moved that we place this valid question, debt exclusion stormwater article on the annual meeting warrant for May, for the annual 2021 town meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote. Dean?
Corey has a question.
Corey's got a question. Go ahead, Corey.
Just to point out a small editing issue, I'm surprised no one else picked it up. We should probably update our title to select board on the three various spaces.
Oh, we'll do that. That's one thing that we'll do for quality control.
All right, I would doubt, you made that change between the article being written and now.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Okay, vote. Dean?
He's about to vote. Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And chair says aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I moved that the board votes to recommend this article to the 2021 annual town meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Take a vote. Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And chair says aye. Did I get everybody? I got everybody. Okay. And it's been voted and recommended. Okay.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Jill, what'd you say?
And there's one more. If we can place a question on the ballot, the 21.
Do we have a motion to place this on the ballot?
So moved.
Second. Second.
All right, let's take a vote. Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
That's for the annual town election, 2021.
That's for the annual town election, 2021. Okay, so, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bob. All right, the next is, sorry, guys. General bylaw amendment, time of meetings. This is a follow-up, Jill, to an article that we had ready for next, for last year?
Exactly. So this was included in the Chatham 365 Task Force Recommendations back in September of 2019. And we were going, there was consideration to put it forward at the last annual town meeting, 2020, and And through some of the curation of putting forward specific articles and reducing the number of articles on the warrant, it wasn't put forward. So we've had this as a placeholder in our file and wanted to see if the board wanted to consider replacement of it. And this would essentially allow the board to set a date in May versus what is specified in our bylaw as the second Monday in May to hold an annual town meeting.
Okay. Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I remember that during the time at Chatham 365, this was very, mostly supported. I think the board of selectmen supported. I'd be willing to make the suggested motion unless somebody else.
Go ahead and make the motion, Peter.
I moved that the board place the article on a 2021 annual town meeting warrant.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion on this? Okay, it's none. Let's take a vote. Peter?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Do we have a motion to recommend? Go ahead, Dean. I mean, go ahead, Peter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I moved the board recommend approval of the general bylaw amendment to the 2021 annual town meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote. Cory?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. All right, thank you. Let's move forward. I just want to note for the selectmen that we, Jill provided us with our annual town meeting placeholder index that we've all been checking off as we go along, which has been most helpful in looking how far we've gotten to town meeting, just beginning. All right, so our next is the 2021 annual town meeting and annual town election. We're considering a date extension for the annual town meeting from the second Monday in May 2021 and location and accompanying date for an annual town meeting to be done by June 30th, 2021. Jill, do you want to kick this off?
Sure. So as we remain under the COVID state of emergency, it's not going to be feasible to hold our annual town meeting indoors, where we normally have it at the Montemoy Middle School Gymnasium with an overflow and auditorium. To set up for it provides the same challenges we had last May and actually June to keep people socially distanced. So I consulted with staff and the moderator, as well as the town clerk, and we have suggested dates to hold the annual town meeting for an outdoor location at Veterans Field. And so we are proposing as our first choice for Saturday, June 12th, 2021 annual town meeting. And through our bylaws, the town election has to be held within eight days. And so the date that we selected, the town clerk and I, was Thursday, June 17th, 2021. And that would be at the community center, as it has been. The legislation that was passed last March to allow us to move the date is still, for the town meeting, is still in effect. But the legislation is due to expire to change the date of the annual town election to provide for early voting. So while we can change the date through our bylaws, it's not sure if we're going to have the same robust early voting that we had for last year. So a few weeks before that annual town election. So that's still being worked on, but we've been able to hold the election safely indoors at the community center. The town clerk's done a great job with that. So with that suggested date for a deferral, it triggers some timeline postponements that Shawna has just placed up on the screen. And what's important to note here is that we had streamlined our annual town meeting warrant for 2020, because we knew it was going to be hopefully a quick town meeting. This town meeting, there's a number of articles that the board is considering. And I think what we, what primarily prompted this beyond the COVID protocols is that the time we need for some public engagement and public information, once the warrant is closed. So this, this date, as you'll see on your screen for the annual town meeting, provides for a last day to close the warrant for a June 12th annual town meeting, no later than April 27th. But you could also do it sooner. And that triggers when it goes to the printer and then our requirement for it to be mailed to each household at least 14 days prior to the town meeting. And with that, the town clerk always holds a voter registration for town meeting. And that deadline would be May 21st. Again, this is for a June 12th proposal. And then similarly with the annual town election, the dates for nomination papers and so forth would also be extended. Those dates are firm for when we set the annual town election. So that's different, and that's on June 17th, 2021. In the report, you saw some previous average daily temperatures for Chatham. There's always a risk when we're outside. But we feel with the Veterans Field layout, we can safely accommodate at least 320 to 640 attendees safely. And having it in an area where people aren't having an obstructed view and can still hear what's going on. But it would be, again, low tech. There would be no presentations. So just something more for the board to consider with an outdoor venue. And that's it. Certainly, it's up to the board to set the date, leave the date, whatever the board chooses. And we can just work our timelines from whatever those dates are. What's not included here for the Saturday, June 12th town meeting is a time. We know that we need at least the morning up until about 11 o'clock to set up and to get everything in order for the town meeting. So if you're interested in that Saturday date, anytime from 11:00 a.m. on is feasible. And as you know, there's lights there too at the ball field. And that's it for me.
Thanks, Jill. As far as the weather concerned, knowing springtime seasonality, just because of the nature of what I family has done for a living in the month of May, it's probably better that we look at June. June, we have much fairer weather on the Cape and in Chatham. But, you know, we don't know with climate change, obviously, what could happen. As far as the time of day is concerned, if I'm really, I'm leaning towards the June 12th, the recommended, staff recommended date. I would say that we should also be considering a rain date, just in case. But also, I think the idea of having a 1:00 p.m. town meeting probably would be enough for the staff to prepare the site and for us to hold a good meeting in the afternoon and be able to break it down, have staff be able to break it down as much as they need to, you know, within daylight hours. So that's where I'm headed. Any other thoughts? I see Jeff's hands up. Jeff?
Yep.
And if you want to comment, and then Cory.
I have a comment and two questions. The questions are, I think June 12th is probably a good date. What is a push-off? Our due date for the warrant, I think it does, for final, for the final warrant. And does it mess up anything to do with the budget in terms of the year end is 6:30? Does that mess up you or Alex in terms of your planning for year end, Jill, and preparing the books of the town, et cetera?
Through the chair, similar to last year, it doesn't, because we, there's not going to be any changes. What the board has voted to transmit to the finance committee, finance committee reviews it and makes a recommendation on it, but they don't technically make any changes. So the sooner the board is able to close the warrant, then everything just kind of kicks into gear. But I saw that Alex just popped on. It's not intended for this to cause any issues with the year-end closing.
Just a quick follow-up, just a quick follow-up. I anticipate, this is, these are going to be, this is going to be a long town meeting. So what happens when we, you know, darkness and you go into the lights and it begins, you know, do we have the next day as well? Or not?
So that's something for the board to consider. I haven't ever had a meeting on a Sunday. I need to look, I don't know if Pat is still on. I think he's off. I'm not sure if there's any mass general law that prohibits it, but that's something we can look at. Otherwise, if we have to continue it, we could do a Monday evening again. Right now, the Chatham A's, if they're playing their regular schedule, they're scheduled to be away on June 12th and following Saturday, June 19th, and we would just book it so that we wouldn't have any, anyone using the field.
So just a quick follow-up through you, Shereen, would the next Saturday be the follow-up then, is what you're suggesting?
It is. It's one thing with the new Juneteenth, which is June 19th, which is a federal holiday. That's just something that we, I haven't had a chance to get an answer on that.
Okay, thank you.
Cory?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, middle June makes a lot more sense if we're going to go outside. The weather's going to be more amenable. I mean, weather's always unpredictable on the Cape, especially in Chatham. Probably guarantee some fog will roll in at some point, you know, whatever. But I'm fully agreement that early afternoon, whether it be 12 or 1, would be a more amenable time for a number of reasons. So 1:00 I would be completely amenable to. And I don't have, for the, for the, I guess, rain date, you're saying Saturday for a rain date, or like Monday evening is a rain date? Like, I'm looking for clarification on, or a recommendation on it.
Right, and I haven't been that clear, because it's still, we're working on that. I don't know if I can keep the chairs set up. So it's probably a breakdown, and then I have to get confirmation with the sound equipment vendor too. On, I'm sure that would need to be put away, if I can reserve it for two days or two separate days. That's what we're still working on.
Okay.
All right, Dean?
Yeah, thanks. So Jill, you mentioned that there's some legislation pending at the state to address the timing of elections. So if we were to take this vote this evening, is that legislation going to affect what we do or undermine it?
So no, and I'm sorry, I misspoke. The timing of the election, we're fine. It's the timing of early voting, how many weeks in advance of the election. That's what's still pending out there.
Okay. And the screen that Shawna put up showing the changes in dates, there were some changes in the election dates. That's for the current annual town election that would ordinarily be held in, on May, I guess, 14th or whatever the date that the town clerk put out, right? So the deadlines for taking out nomination papers and signing them is postponed. I don't, we don't have that screen up right now, but as I recall, it was pushed back almost a month. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the last day, if we go with this June 17th election, the last day for nomination papers to be obtained is April 29th. And then they'd have to, just looking here, they had to be filed by May 13th with the town clerk.
Currently, it's, currently they're due, I think, on the 25th of March.
Yeah, yes, it is coming up. I'm just grabbing my notes. It's March 25th, yes.
Yeah, it's almost, it's almost two foot months. I would support the annual town meeting on Saturday, June 12th. I'm okay with 1:00, maybe with, given what Jeff was pointing out, that this is going to be a really long agenda. You might want to start at noon, if not earlier. But I'm okay with 1:00. I do note for the record, the June 17th, I assume this is not a legal impediment, but it is a legal holiday in Suffolk County. It's not down here. It's Bunker Hill Day.
All right, thanks, Dean. Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can support June 12th. Just, I hate to say this, but sunset's at 8:15 on June 12th.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we're going to go that long, that's fine. I think it's, I think I would agree, we probably will have a long meeting. I still think 1:00 could be okay. You're going to have people, you know, coming in right after lunch. Hopefully, they won't fall asleep and we'll make it through 5, 6 o'clock. That's it.
We paid $400,000 for those lights. We might as well use them. Not be paying $400,000. I think the league paid a lot toward them.
So typically, town meeting goes till, what, 10 o'clock if it, and then there's, usually the moderator does initiate a next, a day meeting. So we do have, if we do do this at, let's say, 1:00 or, let's say noon, then we've got a big window of six hours to get, even eight hours if we had to. Maybe there'd be some intrapreneurial mobile trucks that would park up Depot Road for people to run and grab some snacks and coffee and whatnot during the, during the meeting. Anyway, Peter, your hands up.
Madam Chair, I didn't take it down.
Okay. All right. So any further discussion on this? Do we want to make a motion for a date and time for both the annual town meeting and the town election? Are we ready to go that route?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I moved that we establish a date for 2021 annual town meeting for Saturday, June 12th at 1:00 p.m. to be held outdoors at the Veterans Field.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do we have any, is there any flavor to change that to noon rather than 1:00? Give that extra. You want to make that noon, Peter?
No.
It's up to the board.
I vote for noon.
Okay. Second?
I'd accept it, whoever's.
Okay. All right, who did the second? Cory?
I seconded it the first time, yeah.
Are you okay with noon?
I prefer 1:00, to be honest with you, but I'm not, I'm not going to, it's not going to break my, no, I'm not going to, I'll roll with it. I would prefer 1:00, but I'll roll with noon.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, all right. We'll take, all right, we've got first to second. I'll take a vote on this. Peter?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
The vote is for noon, right?
Yes.
The vote is for noon, June 12th.
Aye.
Okay, Jeff?
It's the warmest part of the day. Aye.
And the chair says aye. Could I get a motion about the town election for June 17th, 2021?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll move to establish a date for 2021 annual town election for Thursday, June 17th, 2021, at the Chatham Community Center.
Second?
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair says aye. All right. Go forth and plan, Jill.
Yes, I will come up with a contingency rain date.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so our last piece is a select board meeting, public participation policy. This is our six-month review. I also want to let people know that public comments will be accepted during this items discussion. I think that's where we're at. And so I just want to go back that, that back in July, we, I think it was July that we voted and then created a public policy, a public participation policy with the idea that we'd look at it in six months to see how it's going. What we have set up, working, that we've worked under a guideline, as I had said in the way that the meeting goes, is that public comments are accepted before the business agenda items are discussed and after. But none of the hearing notices and none of the, and then we did establish a consent agenda policy as well. So right now, we're here to review this. I do want to say that we did receive some emails. The policy that Stephen Buckley had spoke to actually is, it can be found in the town manager's page. I do have a copy of it, that the Citizens petition, Article 43, that was adopted in 2014. That speaks to, basically, it speaks to the promises and what we promote and what we seek to facilitate, and how we look for input from the public and whatnot. So I have that if anybody has any further questions about that. But I did want to speak to how we've been conducting the meetings and to understand that when we started this, we started this with the idea of a more efficient meeting. And it was, there was never any intent in what we were doing to stifle commentary, stifle comment. There was nothing to limit citizens' participat, citizens' participation at all. But basically, it was to continue to provide opportunity for our townspeople. But basically, it was to continue to provide opportunity for our townspeople to weigh in on our meetings. We were simply taking our business items and we were discussing them by, as a board. We have seen that many of, many people weigh in at the beginning and the end of our comment, during our comment periods. But we, we seem to get a lot more emails that are very substantial and thoughtful in their, in what they say. And I think that's been a very helpful process. I've enjoyed working this way with everybody, especially in the idea that we're in a Zoom world or Teams meeting world. And I'm really excited to say that I'd like to continue this and move forward with the same policy. Except I'd like to see that we perhaps can reconsider that last public comment period at the end of the meeting. I'm open to comments and suggestions from the board and then we'll move into the public. So Corey, your hand's up, so.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Please, yes. You know, no secret, I did not support this change originally. I'm very glad that we took the time to do a six-month review to kind of see how it would flush out. We're all operating, operating under this new norm with the Zoom video, Teams meetings, et cetera. Not my personal preference. I miss being face to face with the public, but, you know, we are working under the conditions we have to work with. So, but I, I actually would prefer to go back similar to what we had before, with the main focus being the public input component of it. I, the concern I had prior to our change has kind of been reinforced in our six-month review with, we have board discussions on items and the public doesn't necessarily know the tenor or the tone we're going to take on the item. And I kind of missed the dialogue of having comments made by the board, input made by the public, you know, hand in hand to kind of figure out what the direction of the agenda item may take with a final vote. I, I think having the comments earlier in the meeting, citizens kind of have to shoot blindly about where, where we might hit on an item. And I don't find it as efficient. I certainly don't have any interest in keeping the comments at the end of the meeting. You know, it's frankly, it's just either, it's either a criticism or a pat on the back that really isn't necessary. We're all doing our jobs as best as we can, but I don't find it overly constructive when all said and done. So I would actually like to go back to the old ways where we get public input. But I'd also like to recognize that I would also be in favor of having the chair or the board putting a time limit on speakers. But having the chair have the discretion to extend that time, you know, in circumstances where the topic is a little more in the spotlight and, you know, some of the comments may make a little bit beyond a three or four-minute time limit. But have some discretion from the chair to extend that with the board's support. So I kind of missed the old ways. I'm not overly fond of how we've been operating with some of the details. So that would be my recommendation to revert back to something similar to the prior format with some minor modifications. Thank you.
Thanks, Corey. I just wanted to add one thing that I, a couple of things that I didn't speak to. When we've had issues that have been of dire importance to the town, we have allowed public comment to transpire during that process. We've taken it out of the business agenda and sort of put it into the, the world in which you're asking for the entire meeting to happen. We've also held a number of very substantial public forums that have been helpful in gathering our community's input. One of the things that I thought as a representative of the town is that we represent, we voted, we were voted in as representatives of the entire town. And we, when we make our decisions and we keep that in mind, obviously. And oftentimes, it's not just one person's opinion or somebody that's just weighing in. So I just want to make that clear that I feel like our processes is, has been good and I'm very supportive of continuing that. Dean had his hand up, then Jeff, and then Peter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, the comments you just made, I think are very well taken. And I think you have applied the policy with a great discernment. And tonight is a good example because we're going to have public comment permitted on this. I supported the policy when it was adopted. I had been concerned for a number of years about the public comment process becoming at times unduly lengthy and repetitive. And when I became chairman back in two thousand eighteen, I proposed a four-minute limitation on speaking times. It didn't generate any support from my colleagues on the board. I probably should have just imposed it by fiat. And I regret that I did not do so. But nonetheless, when I was chair, I allowed, I never cut off anybody, to my recollection. I allowed anybody to speak as often as they wanted and as long as they wanted. But I do think that the current process has been fairly efficient and effective. It allows for a less disjointed discussion among, among the board members. And it is a business meeting of the elected representatives of the public, and you make a valid point. We do have a number of citizens who are very passionate about issues and they frequently attend our meetings and participate. And I value their input, just as I did this evening on the tax issue, the fee issue, I'm sorry, Jeff. But, 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 but you are correct, Shereen. You know, we represent the entire town. And a lot of people don't take the time or are perhaps intimidated about coming before the board at speaking their mind. Nonetheless, I'm certainly, and I also think that the, the comment period at the end of the meeting, that's probably the one point that, one feature that should be eliminated. We took that from the school district policy. That's what they have. I don't think it has been terribly productive. But anyway, we did get a number of emails. They were all in favor of reverting to the prior policy. Several individuals indicated they would be receptive to a time limit on speakers. And that's sort of consistent with what I had advocated previously. But before I commit on this, I'd like to hear what, you know, others, including board members and the public have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dean. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I echo your sentiments, Madam Chair, and those of Selena Castro as well. I think it has gone well. I think largely to do with, you know, the way you've, you've conducted the meetings and under your leadership. When we had those major league issues, if you will, you certainly allowed public participation when it was most appropriate. And certainly was appreciated by, I think, the rest of this board and by the public themselves. So I would, I would extend what we do, the way we do it now. I would, I would get rid of the, the public participation at the end of the meeting. I think it gets lost, it gets late. I think it gets lost. And as Corey said, you know, it's usually a, you know, a ding or an atta boy, atta girl. So it really doesn't have a whole lot of value. And I think it's really incumbent upon the chair to run the meeting, to gauge the need for public participation and run the meeting accordingly. To echo Dean's comment, I was chair a couple of years and I let folks speak ad nauseam. I always let everybody speak to the bitter end. There were times when, at least I recollect that, there were times when we had repetitive speakers with pages and pages of written materials that they read that was but repeating what was said in the prior speaker and the prior speaker and the prior speaker. It got very old very quickly for, I think, the members of the board and the public and fellow members of our, of our voting public. So I really have enjoyed our ability to have a discussion around issues without interruption, to have a meaningful discussion amongst the select board themselves. That's what we were elected to do and make decisions thereupon. Now, and we should definitely, I think we get enough input, I really do. I think you've done, I think you've done, again, my point, I guess, is a long-winded one, is that it really isn't incumbent on a chair to be talented enough to recognize when we do those one-themed meetings forums, when you invite the public in for comment. And I think, I think this, this format makes us more attuned to that, to the talent of the chair, if you will. So those are my comments. I would continue what we've got going. I would end the comment at the end.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Sorry.
No worries. Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will support what Jeff and Dean said. Just to reinforce a couple of things. This is a business meeting. The agenda comes out on Friday. The package that gets put on, on the, on the website, basically, that's what we, what the public sees is what we see. Now, they don't see some of the emails that we have, and every once in a while, some other stuff would be involved. So they have an idea of what's being, going to happen. I, I find it important that public speaks ahead of time. And I understand the idea of understanding the tenor of each of, how it's coming across to us. But I'd rather hear what they want, what they're thinking first. And again, we do represent a greater amount of people, five or 10 people. And I certainly agree that those that come in that are passionate about it, I've always listened to them. And I, and even in my, in our prior jobs that we've had with the town, we didn't include them. So my, my point is, this is a business meeting. I think the public input is very important. I think it should be from what they think we're going to think about. And that's basically my thought. And I agree that the, the public comment at the end is, is, is probably not very useful. And I'll leave the rest. I have a couple of other comments. If someone makes some other comments later, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, we have a couple of remote participants that would like to comment. First one is Susanna Nickerson. Susanna, welcome.
Hi, am I on?
You are. Go right ahead.
Great. I'm going to read from my cell phone. I'm Susanna Nickerson, Main Street, Select Board. I feel that our town government is better with more input from our citizens, that every opportunity for discussion of an issue should be upheld. Therefore, I am opposed to changing our public comment period. We are Americans, and as such, we have a great right and should be able to be involved with our town government in a meaningful way. By having the comment period come once before the select board discusses an issue and once after the select board have voted, seems both awkward and false. Awkward because we have not yet heard what the select board is thinking and false because our comments are coming after the select board's vote and therefore don't have any weight. It seems our rights and freedoms are already compromised in Chatham and being taken away from us a little at a time. I imagine other boards might follow your lead, leaving us with diminished citizen involvement. Being able to respond to the board's opinions or ideas, I believe, is an extremely valuable freedom and tool of communication. This we will be giving up. It seems that you are taking measures to control our freedom to comment at the appropriate time within the select board's meeting. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Susanna.
Chair, Davis?
I've got you on the list, Gloria.
Thank you.
Can you just hold on one moment, please? Stephen Buckley's next. Stephen?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Right. Got that, Peter? It would be nice, even though if, if in any policy that moves forward, if there is reference made to the town policy, the town of Chatham policy, the overarching policy of the town inserting public participation. And that way, when people see what's being proposed as practice, they can look at the policy and say, oh, here it is. A, B, C, D, these are the things that we would like to happen. Does that jive with what's being proposed in practice? That's why you have Policy and Procedures Manual. It's not a Policies Manual. It's not a Procedures Manual, Policies and Procedures Manual. And so I know you said you're not a corporate gal, and I'd get in trouble if I said that, Madam Chair. But in corporations, that's a Policies and Procedures Manual. There's, people call it red tape, but it's really how an organization is supposed. And even if the president chair leaves, there should be something in place that would be constant so that even if the president chair does a wonderful job, and I think she does, that the next person would not have to. It doesn't, shouldn't be based on personality. It should be placed on the policies and procedures that are there. So the person, the chair doesn't have to make up for shortcomings in it. The other part that I would like to point out is that ordinarily, I ask a town meeting that we do less than five minutes. So I'm all in favor of less, you know, two or three minutes, and I'm going on now. But simply because the way it's set up, the system has been set up now, is that you have to save it all. And it's like, I've been to many public participation places where it's designed so that everybody has to hold it in, and then you give them both barrels. And I don't think people should, no, there's no discussion that we have in professionally or personally where one side gives both barrels and the other side gives both barrels, and you go, wow, that was a really good conversation. No, it's better when it's meted out separately. And what Corey was saying, it's better to have it more conversational so that someone can say, oh, now that I've heard what the board has to say about this, they, maybe they don't know something and I can just throw that in, and it won't take five minutes. You just say, did you know that the town, the town of Lexington had an online town meeting last year? They did it virtually. They didn't have to do it. I'm like, oh, I didn't know that. But when you pre, when you have it something, when it's, oh, this is business. So there's no opportunity for anybody to say, let you know something you didn't know. One little thing that might make all the difference. And I'm not saying we have, I'm not pushing online. I'm just saying, that's just an example of where somebody might know something you all didn't know. But once you make a decision, it's too late. So even if you had it afterwards, we wouldn't anticipate what's going on ahead of time. And the other part is, tonight's, this one, this agenda item, I never, you never know when an agenda item is going to be, allowed to comment or not to comment. So there's like, do I talk first? Do I, do I talk at the end? Will we be able to talk in the middle? It's very confusing from the perspective of people like who are outside to say, how and when should I talk? Do I, do I say before, like I said? And so it's very frustrating. And what I wanted to say was that, one thing was, a few years ago, I went to a conference, the International City and County Management Association. And I went there because there was a lot, it was in Boston, so I didn't have to fly anywhere. And they had a lot of sessions on civic participation, public participation. And when I got there, the person who signed me in was Jill Goldsmith. I said, oh, what are you doing here? You know, she was, it was twenty thirteen, as a matter of fact. And they had all these things. It was the ninety-ninth conference of ICMA. So they've been around for a while. And the thing is, we don't have to reinvent. Why do we have to come up with our own? What's working out there? Where did this one come from? You know, why does it have to be homemade? If there's best practices from organizations that have been meeting for a hundred years on how to engage the public and what's going on now, then why aren't we researching that? As a matter of fact, in looking up which year it was just now, they have a session, they have a webinar coming up in March. You look at their ICMA website, evaluating your community engagement strategy. Hey! Because the thing is, seven out of eight people think they're above average. And whenever I walk up to somebody after a meeting, after sitting in the back and listening to the up to somebody after a meeting, after sitting in the back and listening to the people mutter about what a crappy meeting it was, I go up and ask the people, whether it's the board or something else, to be able to say, how did you think that went? And they always say, I think that went really well. Of course, you all think this is working out well, because it suits your purposes, but it doesn't suit the people who are trying to be involved in the decisions that affect their lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know if that was five minutes, but there you go.
Little over. That's okay. Ira Selden. And then it'll be Gloria, and then Elaine Gibbs. Ira?
Think you may be muted.
Not Ira Selden, it's Florence.
Florence. All right. You get me every time, Florence.
I know, it does that on teams. Just a couple of comments. I think that your current policy allows for, and you have had, the select board has had, a far, a more effective and cohesive discussion in this setup, talking to one another. In the past, the board discussions were sometimes disjointed, because you would have a single select person engage in a back-and-forth dialogue with a member of the public, rather than with each other. And that happened more times than you can, than I can name now, but a lot. So that created a disjointed dialogue and discussion among you. I don't think you have taken a vote at a first discussion. When an important item has come up, you have discussed it, which enables people then, at the following meeting, or when it's going to come up again, to give their input in detail. You've sometimes allowed public comments during a discussion on a particularly important item. And I think you have indicated when those would be involved. Your public forums, by the way, have been very effective and public, and there's been excellent participation of the public in those forums. I go back to the one that you had when, early on, with the COVID discussion, and there have been others as well. Probably far more people participated in those than participate in your weekly select board meetings. I looked at Mr. Buckley's resolution on the public participation policy. The policy was never really adopted by the select board. But I think you do, the current policy, I think, does carry out the spirit of the resolution. For example, tonight, a member of the public had many questions about the transfer tax, and the select board paid attention to those. And during your discussion, you looked for answers. You named those questions and looked for the answers to those questions. So the public was clearly not ignored. So I would urge you to maintain the current format. I think it's enabled your business meetings, and they are thus to be effective. It's allowed you to hear from the public, and you have done that in many different ways. So thank you.
Thank you, Florence. Our next speaker, commenter, is Gloria Freeman. Gloria?
Thank you, Chair Davis. I wish I could agree with the previous speaker, but I can't. I believe the best-selling point I could make is what happened tonight when I had to ask questions and make comments during the public comment period regarding the transfer tax agenda item. It seems to me it would have been much more efficient if I could have listened to the presentation, heard your comments, and then asked only those questions which had not been covered. And sorry to say, not all my questions were answered. That's why I'm hoping that you will reconsider your current policy and provide citizens a genuine, effective access to the process and the opportunity to be heard in context to the discussion. And we should be able to ask questions and have those questions answered. Certainly, limits can be set for the amount of time a speaker may have for a specific agenda item. Several years ago, you encouraged boards and commissions to allow time for public discussion. Do you remember that? But now, other boards and commissions are adopting your new policy. The Airport Commission has already adopted a version of this in an effort to curtail public comment, with the chairman stating that this is what the select board is doing. And I think others will surely follow. Some of you have enjoyed, that was your word, the current procedure. But as a citizen, I find it ineffective and awkward, someone else said, and that's a good word to describe my feelings, to wait in a queue, to ask a question unrelated to the other questions being asked about numerous agenda items. We cannot anticipate the information the board will be using to make their decisions or understand the direction of the discussion. And for the public to discuss this after the vote is pointless. For many years, the board provided citizens with the opportunity to express our views after each agenda item had been introduced and discussed by the Board of Selectmen. I hope that you will reconsider and return to that practice, and thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. My next speaker is Elaine Gibbs.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I assume the whole purpose of trying to decide what the policy is going to be is for efficiency and not to try and stifle public comment. I think, first of all, we have to recognize that this is a very difficult time. We're still in Zoom meetings. There are a whole host of reasons why people cannot acclimate to this. The public may wish to comment. They don't know how, or they simply can't sit for three hours in front of a computer screen. I think there is a compromise here. I would hope, I think you should continue to allow public comment at the beginning of the meeting, so that those who wish to comment on merely one or two items, just to get their thoughts across before you discuss it, can do so, so that they don't have to sit before their computer, when they might have kids running around and doing whatever else is to be done. But they want to make sure you cover that information. Because there are times where I have felt, well, maybe you haven't thought of this, and it would be too late during the agenda item, because you've already made up your minds. So I would ask that you continue that, because I think it's very efficient. But then I would also ask you to allow public comment during the agenda items for those few remaining people left who may still have questions, or where their questions were not answered. I think you eliminate a whole bunch of people at the beginning. They come on, they say their piece, and they leave. I don't think there's any reason for the final comments. It's too late. But I think it's really unfortunate that there are agenda items where you are getting very close to a vote, and people can't speak until after, frankly, you've all made up your minds. It happens. You know, you've all said, this is where we stand, and then you open it up, and the odds of anybody changing your mind is nonexistent. So my recommendation would be, leave at the beginning, so people can, you know, weigh in, but not be tied down all night long, in hopes that they will change their minds. And then allow people, before you take any vote, allow people to weigh in. And then review it. If we ever get out of this remote stuff, and we go back to in-person meetings, you can always review it again. But this has been very difficult for you guys, and it's been very difficult for the public. And it's very time-consuming, and preparation is a lot more, as you all know, than it is in a live meeting. And it is for people participating. So I hope you will compromise comments at the beginning and comments during the agenda items. And then forget about the final comments at the end. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine. Florence, your hand is up. Is that still up, or are you up again? Florence? Yes, she's not. Elaine, your hand's up again. Did you have something else you wanted to add?
No, I guess I lowered it twice. I apologize. It went back up.
No worries. All right. Florence's hand's up, but I don't hear her, and I'm just assuming that's probably still up from her last time commenting. Okay. I'm going to bring it back to the board for now. Is there any additional comments that the board wants to make, or a motion that they want to make? I do want to say, and I want to remind people, civic participation and public engagement comes in a lot of different ways. And we get them through, not just right now, at our meeting, but we oftentimes are engaging the public as selectmen and elected officials of the town that represent the people of the town in many different ways. If you're on social media, you obviously engage in the public there. If you're at the grocery store, if you're at, during another meeting with another cultural club, or whatever you have, we're always engaging the public into discussion on many matters, not simply just here at this meeting. So, and I really, really have a problem when people say that we are taking away anybody's freedoms or rights during this meeting process. I think we've gotten very good feedback during our public forums. Nobody's been stifled. We've been more than patient with a lot of comments. And we have opened up opportunities when we've needed to, when we found it necessary, again, to either have a public forum, or to expressly have a time when people can comment. So I really take umbrage under the idea that anybody thinks that their freedoms or their rights are being taken away from this, by this board or selectman. I just find that to be an outrageous statement. But if we could just get more comments from the board, I'd appreciate it. And then we can move forward with an action if you warrant it. Cory? Cory, you're muted. Do you mind I'm muting?
There I go. Okay. Normally, it's Peter. My turn tonight. No, I just want to make a couple of closing comments. I think this board has done a great job adjusting to this online meeting schedule, and I think our chair has done a great job running the meetings. You know, it's a new norm for all of us. But in the spirit of efficiency, my own personal opinion and personal view is, I get the best results out of a dialogue, a back-and-forth dialogue on an agenda item. So again, my preference would be go back to something similar to what we had before with some minor modifications. It doesn't appear that seems to be the sense of the board, but I stand strong. I would like to revert back to the previous policy and previous procedure. But again, that's my preference for my opinion. So, thank you.
Cory, Cory, do you want to make a motion to that, as a matter of record?
Sure. I would love to, after our six-month trial period, revert back to the previous policy, where public input is conducted per agenda items with a three-minute time limit, with the discretion of the chair, with discretion to the chair for any modifications to that.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
Madam Chair, I'll second it for purposes of discussion. I'm not sure I was.
Okay, further discussion. Anybody? Any further discussion?
Well, Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm. Go ahead, Dean.
It's Dean. Yeah, the town managers or the executive secretary's memo suggests four possible actions on the current policy. One would be to extend the trial period. Two would be to approve the policy. That would, I assume, let it stand in place until some board of selectmen decides they want, or the select board decides they want to change it. Three is to discontinue the policy, and four is to further amend the policy. I've listened to the comments tonight. I mean, I'm not persuaded that we should abandon this new policy, but I am persuaded that we should eliminate the final comment period for reasons that many people have proposed tonight. I think I would tend to favor approving the policy. The trial period is over. And so I don't think I'm going to be supporting Cory's motion, but I appreciate the points that Cory has put forward. But I just don't really come down the same way.
Okay. Any further comments on Cory's motion, before we go to vote? Okay. All right. We're going to take a vote, then. Cory, on your motion. Peter?
Day.
Dean?
No.
Jeff?
No.
Cory?
Kay, yes.
And Chair says no. So the motion didn't pass. Thank you, though, for your input. Cory, appreciated it. So again, Dean had framed up any next steps we want to take on this public policy. Extend the trial period, approve the policy, discontinue the policy, or amend, which, if we could go, extend the, approve the policy with amendments, if we want to do such that. So do we have a motion? Anybody want to present a motion?
I'll move, Madam Chair, to approve the policy and amend it to discontinue the last public input at the end.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Jeff, second. Any further discussion from the board? Okay. No further discussion. Any discussion from the remote participants? Okay, hearing none. We'll take a vote. Dean?
Mr. Buckley is just.
Buckley has a.
Oh, Mr. Buckley, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you again for that. Yes, if the, if the board does go forward with this, I would ask that, if other people would like to provide a more objective opinion about the quality of public participation going forward, I do audits of public participation things. I haven't done it in Chatham. Too many friends. I don't want to make any enemies. So, but if it gets to that point where, again, and I think it might reach that point, where we can point out things like, for instance, in the packet today, does not conform with the item under the town's policy that says, people should know how their input affected the decision. And if we look in the packet, it says, public input was received at both meetings last summer. Oh, what, how did that affect the board's decision? How did that affect anything? It doesn't say how any comments were considered in any way leading up to tonight. So that's just one example of how unconscion, inadvertently, not consciously, you know, it was just shortcomings that you're not realizing are happening. And another point. So anyway, if anybody wants to contact me to help with auditing, whether it's committees like the Airport Commission, whose chair is not as good as.
Okay, we're not talking about the Airport Commission tonight, and we're not soliciting for business. So just comment on the.
Other committees are using you as the model. You're the leaders. They're using your leadership thing. So it does have an effect on other ones. So to be able to point out to other committees that they're not complying with the town's thing by not pointing out, for instance, where last month's input had any effect at all. In which case, if you don't tell people how it affected it, they'll go, why go to a meeting if they're just going to ignore me? That type of thing. There needs to be proof positive that it's having some effect. And so that's an example right there tonight. But other thing is, emails, very thoughtful emails. I'd like to see these very thoughtful emails. Maybe I don't need to say anything if somebody's made the point five times to you already in emails. So please share those. I mean, they can be attached to a packet. They don't make it in by Friday. They don't get considered. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elaine?
Yes, Madam Chair. I guess my concern is that the whole point here was, we were concerned that the new public policy become more restrictive. And what happened with this vote is you made it more restrictive. There is no longer a public comment at the end, and we still can't discuss or comment during the agenda period. And I find that really unfortunate and pretty disturbing, that you will take a vote without any public comment. And I would also point out that you say there are various sources. I've never met any of you in a grocery store. I've never met any of you in a grocery store. And I have to tell you that with the exception of Corey and Dean, with all the emails I have written, I have never even received acknowledgement of receipt for most of the selectmen. Corey and Dean do it on a regular basis. Other than that, I wouldn't even know if you've ever read them. So I think it's selective, who you read, who you listen to. And tonight, I think this was a really unfortunate vote, that you have made it even worse. That we can't even have a final say at the end of the meeting, after you have voted, to say that we are unhappy with that vote. But, you know, you're, you're the ones running the show. But I think, I think it's really unfortunate. And thank you, Corey, for making the effort. That's all I have to say. And it's the last time we get to have a final say, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess we haven't taken the vote. We're going to take that vote now. So let's proceed. Peter?
Aye.
Corey?
Nay.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Motion is passed. Thank you. All right, so that concludes our regular business meeting. And this will be our final time that we will receive public comment at the end of our meeting. If there's anybody who would like to do so, please raise your hand. Elaine, your hand is up. Is that for this meeting, I mean, for, for public comment right now? Or is that from previous speaking? All right, I'm not hearing. Any other, any? I know she's muted, but if she unmutes, apparently not. Okay, any other public comments before we, or final thoughts from the board? All right. Okay, so we're going to take a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we'll take a vote. Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Chair says aye. I really appreciated tonight's meeting. I'm really happy to see that we did vote in some extra staff for the firefighters. And we had this conversation about the policy, as well as we're moving forward to town meeting. And that's exciting that we're making those plans at this time. Jill, thank you to you and to the staff for their presentations this evening and for the support staff behind the scenes. Everybody, please stay safe, continue to wear your masks, wash your hands. And hopefully, we'll have some exciting news by the end of the week on vaccinations and more opportunity. So take care, and we'll see you next week.